I would like to welcome everyone to the September 24th, 2020 work session of Enrico County School Board. The first item on the agenda is their approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogbonn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is our closed session. Closed session for discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, and the admission and discipline of specific students. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Cancela is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed session. I want to certify our closed session so that we can continue with our work session. Is there a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Cancela is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the first item, I'm recommending that the school board approve the readmission of student case number 18-19-S-7, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion to approve the request of readmission of student case number 18-19-7-S-7?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogbonn is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The readmission is approved.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of administration personnel?
Oh, wait. Sorry.
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea is their second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The administrative appointment is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The Board has just approved Stephanie Rouse, Senior Controller in Finance. For the next item, we want to provide the Board an update on our 2020-2021 school opening. I know at our previous meeting, we were three days into the school year, and I provided an update then. We now have 13 days under our belt, so I'm excited and pleased to be able to update you on our back-to-school efforts, aside from what's happening in the virtual environment. Very pleased to share how we are supporting the needs of our various communities. As of last week, each of our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students were invited to meet his or her teacher or school staff in one-on-one meetings, and that began the week of September 14th. Our elementary leaders and teams are so excited to offer these individual meet-and-greets that are going to give our students, families, and staff a chance to connect, build rapport and relationships, and experience various areas inside their school buildings. This week, students with disabilities who require physical assistance to use virtual instruction will have the opportunity to go into a school facility. Technical difficulties, pardon me. My apologies if you missed some of that. We were, I was excited to announce how we were beginning to welcome our pre-K and K students for meet-and-greets the week of September 14th, and are now beginning to welcome students with disabilities who require physical assistance to use virtual instruction, and will have the opportunity to go into school facilities to work alongside their teacher or instructional assistant if their IEP calls for such services. So, beginning October 5th, in-person learning opportunities will be available for small groups of students, continuing that pre-K through third-grade focus as we described when we originally adopted the model, to go with predominantly virtual offering those in-person experiences with our English learners and students in our career and technical education programs soon having opportunities as well as part of what we've called limited in-person instruction. School meals, our school nutrition heroes have continued to impress us with the way they've reimagined every aspect of food services. As of the start of this week, HCPS has served more than 128,000 meals, 61,000 breakfasts, and 67,000 lunches, to be exact, since the start of the school year, which, again, it was only about 13 days ago. Typical lunch offerings include our most popular items, including taco salads, chicken sandwiches, and pizza, as well as yogurt-based healthy day meals as a vegetarian option. Breakfast options include chicken and sausage biscuits, pancakes, waffles, and cereal. All meals include appropriate portions of fruits and vegetables, plus a milk. And I think I noted I wrote along on one of the food service bus routes before, and it sure did smell quite delicious. The meals are available, as a reminder, to all students everywhere, so we encourage our families to participate. Schools offer meals during breakfast and lunchtime Monday through Thursday, and buses deliver to 61 bus stops every Monday and Wednesday. And this information is online and in newsletters, and we'll be advertising using yard signs, bus banners, and paper flyers as well. Technology, of course, you already know the heroic HCPS technology team has been working tirelessly alongside our schools to support virtual learning. Let's take a look at some of those numbers. HCPS has obtained 3,125, that's 3,125, T-Mobile Wi-Fi hotspots. In August and September, we distributed 3,776 iPads to our pre-K and K families for remote learning. In that same timeframe, we distributed 12,775 Chromebooks for families of students in grades one through five. And our Help Desk has been running very busily, helping and assisting our families with virtual learning. The total number of Help Desk emails from August 10th to September 11th was 12,230. So proud of the way that Help Desk team has been assisting our families. And as of September 19th, the current Help Desk emails are around 200, pending those contacts and bringing those situations to resolution. So, again, so proud of the way our technology team comes together to serve our families, our students with virtual learning. For the next item, I wanted to mention changing gears a moment, some feedback related to middle school and high school virtual bell schedules. As this Board is aware, the Board and staff did hear some early feedback from both some of our families, as well as some of our staff, related to concerns about the length of the middle and high school bell schedule. So we quickly administered a survey to hear directly from our students, from our staff, and from our families, and that was available to our families in Spanish as well, to get their thoughts about our current bell schedule. A number of concerns had been brought up related to the amount of screen time and the length of the virtual day. So you can see from our responses here that we had a good response rate from our students' parents and teachers. I think teachers was the highest response rate, with about 99% of all of our teachers responding, middle and high school teachers. About 61% of our students responded, and about 40% of our parents. But as you can see, there were some mixed ideas about whether the schedule was currently meeting their needs, or there might be value in taking that independent work time and moving it outside of the bell schedule. And so, given this information from the survey, as well as anecdotal feedback, I know both the Board and staff have received, we are going to be adjusting our schedules to make sure that we're allowing the independent and asynchronous instruction to continue. We still want to maintain that instructional time, but shifting that outside of the bell schedule. So that shifting of independent work time, removing to the end of the schedule, will be a change that's upcoming, and we'll look forward to communicating that to our staff and to our families so that they can prepare for next steps related to that. So for now, I'll pause and be delighted to hear any feedback or questions the Board may have related to the back-to-school update.
I'll start to my right. Ms. Cancela, do you have any?
Yes, I do. Well, once again, I'd like to express gratitude to everyone who's worked tirelessly throughout the division and my colleagues, Dr. Cashwell, that's made our return, predominantly virtual return, go so smoothly. Thank you so much for the timeliness of that survey in response to our families, students, and teachers and staff about the secondary day. I'm just amazed that the turnaround time was so quick, and I think it's going to make a big difference on our virtual learning. Everyone is overwhelmed, and providing that flexibility will benefit everyone. I have a question as to the next survey, just because of all of the correspondence I've received about second quarter, and I know we're not there yet. But what do we foresee in terms of a survey to our families? Will we be doing that similar to what we did in July?
The Health Committee noted in their last presentation their intent as they're gathering information to make a recommendation to the Board on October 22nd about how we'll approach the second nine weeks. They'll want to survey both staff and families regarding what their intent might be should they introduce a recommendation that involves any level of increased in-person instruction compared to what we're doing now. So, yes, and I think later in the Health Committee presentation, you'll get the approximate timeframe for when that survey will launch, but looking at an October timeframe to hear from both our staff and families regarding their potential intent for quarter two.
Right. I guess outside of the Health presentation that comes later in the meeting, but I was speaking, or maybe I should have been more clear, as to will we be providing options, do you think, for second quarter beyond virtual?
Well, certainly, we'll be relying on the Health Committee's recommendation as to whether there'll be the ability, based on the factors they're looking at, health data, staffing, and PPE, as they've shared before, weighing those factors, as well as the intent of both staff and students, to determine whether there would be the opportunity to increase in-person instruction. And so, yes, we would be asking families to weigh in on that, as well as staff. I hope I'm answering your question.
Yes, absolutely. It was just outside of, I know normally during our Health Metrics presentation, it's more focused on metrics.
Absolutely.
But I know that we also look at other factors.
Oh, no doubt. Yes, and so that will be very important. We're always anxious to be able to hear through surveys and other mechanisms directly from our families.
And then I also had another question in regard to communicating with our families throughout this process. I know I've talked about our EL families and our ability to communicate. Where are we in looking at new software to help us communicate across the division?
Well, we've certainly worked to, on an in-house level, at the division level, translate any documents or information for our families. That's most easily and quickly done into Spanish, as was the case for our back-to, I'm sorry, our secondary schedule survey. But with a little more lead time, we often try to make sure that, and you'll see from our website, making materials that are important available to our families in about five languages. We are looking to find ways that we can turn around some of those translations in a more expedited fashion, rather than relying on some of our in-house translators. But we're still working through the potential of adding on assistance, but definitely will work to make sure that we're providing available documents in multiple languages as we're able.
And then two more questions. What flexibility, if any, are we giving students who may have experienced technical difficulty and submitted late assignments?
Well, certainly, not knowing a specific case, I would say in general, absolutely, you know, our teachers understand, as well as our school administrators, that flexibility and grace are paramount, and we understand that there may be reasons a student can't log on to be counted present during a class, or may have issues submitting electronic work by deadline. So we just encourage any student where there may be a question or an issue to contact the teacher, counselor, administrator right away, so that alternative arrangements and plans can be made.
And then the next one is, have there been any changes to the grading scale for the elementary level? Have we talked about it, considered it? I've heard some feedback from some teachers and some parents.
Our grading procedures and policies haven't changed at this point. We are receiving feedback from both teachers at the elementary level, as well as the secondary level, regarding how they can best collect grades that are an accurate reflection of what students know and are able to do, and that's the purpose of grading. And so we want to maintain that purpose. So if there are any adjustments that we can make to some of the procedural pieces to allow us to ensure that grades are indeed an accurate reflection of what students know and are able to do, we're certainly willing to work through that feedback. I know that our team and school leadership has actually been working with the directors and principals on having some conversations about how we can ensure that, in the virtual environment, we are facilitating grading practices and expectations for teachers that do result in capturing that accurate information.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela and Ms. Ogbonn.
Thank you. I would like to echo a couple of things that Ms. Cancela said as far as thanking our staff and our teachers, and, I mean, it is incredibly long days, and the hours that Dr. Cashwell and her team are putting in, I'm sure there, you know, two or three hours of sleep is about all y'all get. But our technology team, too, it is amazing. I've had a number of parents contact me and say, I have this technological issue. They're inevitable. It is going to happen whenever you're using computers. But our team has been responding so quickly, and I've gotten several emails where people said, I can't believe they solved it in 15 minutes, or whatever. But I would, just for anyone who's listening, the, if, I do hear from parents who occasionally don't know what to do. So I'm so glad you said, you know, work with your teacher, work with your principal, work with guidance counselors, if there is an issue, because I think that's one of the things we're finding now is a little helplessness. People just don't know. They're not used to having to ask for help, and I think now they need to, and we kind of all do, you know, get through this together kind of thing. But, you know, I think that parents, if they run into any kind of issue, whether it's a, their kids are just not successful this method, you know, ask for help. Well, the teachers are really good at helping. But I do want to talk about the grading scale. I've heard from a number of teachers, just over the last few days, some of whom I taught with, and it's mainly focusing now on K and 1. And I received one particular letter from a teacher that just really, I mean, she summed it up, you know, they have to have 50 grades, five different subjects, 10 grades per subject, and kindergarten and first grade this nine weeks, that is extraordinarily hard to do. So I would hope that we would, if you could get the staff to look at K and 1 specifically, what they're thinking, the suggestion I've heard from a number of teachers is go back to the, what was done before with just, you know, an S or an N. Let's just keep it simple, for the first nine weeks, and then go to the other grades that the teachers have been employing for the last few years. And that, I think it would take a little bit of pressure off of the kids, because, you know, they, we've got little kindergartners who can't read yet trying to use computers. It's so difficult. So I'm hoping that we will adjust, just for K and 1, until, you know, so I would appreciate the team looking at that.
We'll absolutely take a look, and in fact, I know that's something they've already begun having conversations about, and have received some similar feedback as well, even outside of K 1. Just making sure that, you know, at times, we have suggested numbers of assignments, or graded assignments that teachers should give within a grading period, and looking at whether that number is important, and what we know is important is the quality of the assessment. And so there may be fewer opportunities to assess students, but as long as those are quality opportunities for students to learn, for teachers to really understand what a student knows and is able to do, and provide that feedback, we can certainly look at some flexibility there, while still maintaining standards for students around grading and reporting, and making sure that we are communicating in a timely manner to a student's family or parent regarding their progress, so that there aren't any surprises about that. So working for balance there.
I think it's especially hard for our youngest children to adapt to the virtual format. And so, you know, then being graded is very difficult. So I think we just need to give a little bit of flexibility with our youngest ones and to get to this, to this point of success, but I appreciate you looking into it.
Absolutely.
And just like we did with the high school schedule, the quicker we get that done, I think the quicker the parents and the teachers will relax a little bit. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbonn and Ms. Shea.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Cancela covered many of the points I jotted down, so I appreciate her and Ms. Ogbonn being so thorough. Dr. Cashwell, can we talk a little bit about the limited in-person offerings? I know we've discussed this pretty much at every meeting since July, and as it has evolved, and I appreciate your dedication to getting those select groups of students back in the building. I know we already had, as you mentioned, we already had our pre-K and K come in for one-on-one meetings. This week, we have our IEP students, our EL students to follow. Can you give a little bit of a timeline of what it may look like for our general education, K through 3, as well as how should they expect that communication to be coming to them?
Absolutely. Well, schools are communicating directly with their families as those timelines approach to offer, again, it is an optional opportunity, and certainly families who choose not to take advantage of it, we certainly understand that, will continue in the virtual manner to serve those students. But, yes, schools will communicate directly, you know, because every school staffing and timelines and the transportation, we are offering transportation as part of this. Logistics vary from school to school. The exact timeline may differ, but certainly, the goal we set out was during the first nine weeks, when the Board adopted the schedule that was predominantly virtual, we made it clear then that our goal would be to offer limited in-person for groups of students that we prioritized as perhaps having the most challenges with virtual learning. And I think Mrs. Ogbonn just pointed that out with those younger students, and which is why we prioritize our pre-K, K through 3, as well as our English language learners, and knowing that, again, our CTE courses, where there's some really specific hands-on requirements for those industry certifications, that we would work during the first nine weeks to accomplish those in-person opportunities. We've certainly begun those with the meet-and-greets. I would expect over this nine-week period, as health conditions continue to allow, and schools work through those logistics of staffing and transportation, families in those categories will hear from their school related to what they can expect.
So if they have specific questions about what they may, that may look like for their specific student, the best way to get information for that is from their school principal?
That's correct.
Or teacher.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. I think that those in-person offerings are going to be a really important layer to the instruction we have going on. Next, I want to turn a little bit to the bell schedule. First of all, just a tremendous job in the turnaround on that. I mean, it closed last night. The data's been processed and gotten back to us for a change to begin next week, correct?
That's correct. We're looking at the effective, the 28th, and again, we'll need, or 29th, 28th is a student holiday. Communicate that for that Tuesday change soon to our families, so they'll know just what to expect. But start times would remain the same. It shifts the end of the day, moving the independent and asynchronous portion outside of that bell schedule.
And that's kind, I love that kind of efficiency. That's a really quick turnaround, and so really thank you to your team for making that happen. You know, I have to note that I'm a little bit astounded to see the numbers, the actual turnaround numbers of the survey, and that really, you know, when you look at it, almost, what, 70% of our parents were content with the schedule as is, because that doesn't mirror my inbox at all. It doesn't mirror social media at all. And so I think on a larger scale, it's a really important lesson for us all, not just us sitting up there, but us as a community, to realize that just because you are hearing something in your circles, or that's the most vocal, it doesn't necessarily reflect the feelings of everyone. And so, anyway, really surprised to see those results, but, you know, when we look at the student piece and the teacher piece, and really, you know, I think the important thing to communicate here, which you did, is that we're not reducing the amount of academic time. We are reducing the amount of direct instruction screen time and just kind of reallocating how the day falls. So thank you for the flexibility and attentiveness there to support our teachers and our students. It sounds like we'll talk about the second quarter survey when we get to Health Metrics, so I'll save my comments for that there. I've also heard a lot about the grading, like Ms. Ogbonn alluded to, especially from K 1, and, you know, in a lot of ways, especially the earlier you get, you know, into K and 1, a lot of the grading's more quantitative than qualitative. And so any flexibility we can provide with our teachers there, so that they're still maintaining the standards that we know that they have, but using their professional judgment and their professional opinion for those qualitative kind of assessments to say, who really has mastery and who's still working on it, I think would not only take some things off of our teacher's plate in terms of all the extra things, you know, there are all the boxes they're trying to check, but also could more successfully reflect what the students are actually comprehending. I've also heard some of the progress reports for like our pre-K program are so detailed that it is really difficult for these teachers virtually to get enough information to really have robust conversation, or robust comments on all the details of the progress report. So, you know, whatever we can do to still maintain the integrity of that and our high standards, but adjust accordingly would be fantastic. So thank you to your team for looking into that. My last comment about back-to-school is, there are a lot of things that are going really well with back-to-school. There are a lot of parents who have called me or reached out that, you know, their students are, while this is not their, what they would have chosen, they're finding that their students are adjusting really well, or even parents who have said that their student struggles in school, but is thriving virtually. There are a lot of good things happening. Our teachers are doing incredible things, listening to my first and third graders' classes from the other room. I don't know how these teachers have that much patience with all the pieces. They truly are incredible. But we also know that everything's not going great everywhere, and that there are struggles. I think that our students are learning a lot of important skills, even beyond academics and technical. They're learning independence and grit and flexibility. But there's also a lot of struggles for our families, and when I talk to our families, for some of them, what is happening is not sustainable for them, and that's not a reflection of the teachers' efforts. Our teachers are doing an extraordinary job. Also, what we have now is not sustainable for our teachers and everything they're adjusting to. And so I know your team, Dr. Cashwell, has been really working on all the ways to amend and improve the plans you developed this summer for second quarter with the things that we're learning from districts about what's working and what isn't, and I thank your team so much for doing that, because, you know, none of us have lost sight that our goal is to get kids back in the building and back to face-to-face instruction. And so, anyway, I will pause there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Atkins.
Thank you. I don't know, right word, magnus maybe, for what's being accomplished? I do have a couple of questions and feedback. I don't remember if it was the last school board meeting or a prior, but I would like to hear any updates on exploration around the dimensions of wellness. It is critical that we really get into a deeper exploration of social, emotional, and so that dimensions of wellness really does explore your spiritual well-being, your emotional well-being, your financial well-being, all these different pieces, your physical well-being. And so I think I'd love to hear what have we learned from the dimensions of wellness, and if we don't have that to date, that's fine. I just would like some sort of report or update on that. And I think also, as we look and finalize how we get back into the building, I am really concerned about our seniors, and I mentioned strategic career planning at a prior school board meeting, and I mentioned that because I know our guidance counselors are doing And I mentioned that because I know our guidance counselors are doing the best that they can but in giving guidance to our seniors going off to college, if that's what they choose to do. We really want to give a very real look at what's going on in college. And so our goal is to prepare our children for when they leave us, whether they're going into the work, working world, or the military, or college. That college piece, we have the opportunity to really prepare them for. And so as colleges are also shifting to virtual, I'd like us to really explore that again. So are there any updates on any of those two pieces, those dimensions of wellness along with, you know, career planning?
Well, certainly note that your concerns around wellness, and I know social, emotional has been important to you, and you've mentioned that at each and every meeting. And likewise, it's important to us in trying to figure out how even in the virtual environment, we can ensure that we have that robust offering of social, emotional supports for our families and our students. We are using our advisory periods at the secondary level to be able to do those check-ins on wellness. And also, the morning meeting structure at our elementary level is something that we've been able to infuse into everyday practice in the virtual world. But I know that, you know, part of your question and your suggestion has to do with that longer-term planning of how we're connecting dimensions of wellness into things like next steps for students as we prepare them to be life-ready after they graduate. And so certainly, the high school redesign team is looking at ways that they can strengthen that. We have revamped over the past year our academic and career planning process to involve things like digital college tours and all of those virtual aspects. But certainly, we'll work to continue to enhance those processes and keep an eye towards wellness and that dimension.
Fantastic. Also, I am really happy about what we're doing in making sure that we keep students fed. Can you share with me what happens to the meals that do not get distributed?
Well, when it comes to the food that's prepared maybe, but not distributed, is I guess what you're thinking. Maybe loaded up to go out. If it's been kept, it's still packaged and kept at temperature. There are certain items that can be used for other meal deliveries. Mr. Sorenson, do you have anything to add to that, or does that cover it? Yeah, otherwise, you know, if something perishable or hasn't been at temperature, it would have to be discarded. But we work to keep items before they're served at temperature so that if they're packaged in such a way, they can be used again.
Yeah, I really think if there are opportunities to not throw food in the trash, I'm sure there are several organizations that would love to take that food and feed others. So I'm pleased to hear that we're certainly trying to keep the food that we can. And if there's any opportunity not to throw food in the trash, let's make sure we don't do that. And so I think that's great.
Point well taken. I know there are some guidelines for food handling. And once things have been out for a certain amount of time, whether we could then pass it on, remains a question. But we'll look into that and know that our endeavor is to hopefully give away each and every meal we've prepared. And because, as I said, it's free of charge, we've had great interest. And I think we'll continue to see, as we advertise those opportunities, to provide nutrition, important nutrition to our entire community, that they'll take advantage of those opportunities.
Thank you. And I'm going to speak right to my district and remind you that the food that is being offered is not based upon your economics. It is not based off of where you live. It is truly based on wanting to make sure that your children, your child is fed. So whether you are able to go to the school that's closest to you or your local bus stop, please take advantage. You will be helping yourself by not trying to figure out what you're going to prepare for breakfast, what am I going to prepare for lunch? Check mark once you grab this meal. The other piece is saving money on your grocery bill. Check mark. And then the last piece, making sure that our children, not just yours, but mine as well, because I also picked these meals up, because it's not based on my salary. It is not based on my title. It is based on me making sure that my children have a wholesome breakfast and lunch. And as Dr. Cashwell said, some of this food is delicious. And so please, please, please take advantage of that. We don't want to throw food in the trash. We don't want to do that. But there are requirements that we have to keep. And so let's avoid doing that. Let's make sure that our children have this great opportunity to be fed well. Also, Dr. Cashwell, one other question that I had, as we sort of finalize how we get students back in the building, can you share with me how we are partnering with those in the community, whether it's a church or a family that have opened up their home to help other children learn virtually? How are we working really deep within the community to assist?
Well, our Family and Community Engagement Team, I know, has worked hard to identify who those providers are and make sure that should they need assistance understanding how to create the right conditions when they're supervising students who are also participating in virtual learning during the day, that they have the support, strategies, and ideas to be able to be successful in that. And of course, we remain available should any of those providers have questions or concerns along the way that we might be able to consult or assist them with.
And so for those of you that have opened up your hearts and you've opened up your homes, it's also incredibly important to make sure that you are following CDC guidelines. Make sure that we have an entire department here to help you under FACE, Family and Community Engagement. The director, Ms. Cole, and her staff are happy to help any way that they can. But it is important to stay safe as we are opening up our homes. And I know your hearts are genuine. Let's make sure that we're doing it in a way that help us get our kids back into the building. And while you're doing that, I am doing that as well. And so I want to make sure that, that as we continue what we're doing, this unity in a community that we're doing, that we are doing it as best as we can with the proper guidance. And also, Dr. Cashwell, I will probably want to get some sort of report on how we're actually helping those who have reached out to us. I know there's been trainings that have happened. I'd like to see some sort of consolidated list of how we're doing that. And I'd like to continue to share that, because I think that's a helpful resource for those willing to do that. And I know Adrian sort of already has something similar, but it would be nice to have something consolidated to share.
I'll be happy to get you that information.
All right. And then one other piece of guidance or consideration I would like to share. I met with a group of students and they had a lovely idea. And I've also spoken with a few teachers in the conversation around the amount of work. And I know, I believe, Mrs. Cancela mentioned a little bit of that. And the idea is a formalized way for students to express extensions. This is going to be particularly for high school students. What's happening right now, based on the conversations that I've had, is students will independently ask their teacher. That's the right thing to do if they need an extension. But considering in the virtual world, many of our students may feel a little intimidated by asking in front of the whole class when the teacher asks, does anybody need any extra help? And so the idea was, if HCPS can create a formalized way to ask for extensions so that those students who may be more vocal and say, I need help and I want it now, there are some who need help who may feel intimidated. So if there's a formalized process that could be equitable across all of our schools, where students could fill out this form, submit it, and the teacher gets it. There's no link or anything like that that takes a bit of time. This is something that will have, you know, will need more discussion. But I'd like for us to consider the idea from these students to have a formalized way to ask for an extension of work.
Idea is noted, and we will bring it upon discussion, see what might be done.
And that's all that I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Again, I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments in regards to thanking and just applauding our staff and our families for adjusting and adapting in this virtual world. And we know that there are challenges, but we're thankful that we are definitely addressing them and trying to improve them. So thank you again. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, for the next item, I want to provide a 2020 Legislative Comprehensive Agenda Material Review and Discussion as the creation of the 2021 Legislative Agenda Package is done. And Bev Lammy is here to join us and lead us in that review and discussion. Welcome.
Thank you, Tiffany. Members of the board and Dr. Cashwell, I'm very, very excited to be here. I know I certainly have encountered you all and talked with you, starting from our legislative breakfast, I think, last December. But this is the first time I've had a chance to really come and talk with you about your legislative issues. So I think it's very, very great. I'm also just thought maybe it would be helpful if I told you a little bit about myself and then about the job. What is the job of a legislative liaison? We certainly have it mirrored in many, many, many of our school divisions throughout the Commonwealth. But I am a product of just many, many years of teaching and working in Henrico County schools. I've taught, and I just was sitting here thinking while you all were chatting about different issues that I've taught in the East End, West End, and North Side. So it's just, that's just, it was a great backdrop to have and the experience that I had before I went into certain, some of the roles in central office. Have thoroughly enjoyed this assignment of being the legislative representative. I really take it very seriously. It is an honor to do it. But I also really am, just would like to share with you that it's, you think you've left teaching, you never leave teaching. I am still teaching legislators constantly. You know, when they are making statements and they say things, and I say, well, let me just help you understand what that really means, you know? And it's just constant. And it's very, very rewarding for me as a professional. Let me just also explain behaviorally throughout the year what we do. And I say we, legislative liaisons pretty much are consistent. But certainly, from my point of view, throughout the year, I try to go to and attend all the State Board of Education meetings. I try to follow the General Assembly meeting schedule since they have appropriations meetings throughout the year. Oftentimes, they're meeting in special retreats for education. I try to cover all of those. And of course, now, you know, we're doing a lot of that virtually. I also am very, very lucky to have access to a legislative, it's like a listserv that I get from newspapers all over the state. And they bring to us in the morning articles about things that having to, that are, you know, related to public education. So that's kind of like the ongoing process of getting, you know, just keeping yourself very aware of what are current education issues. In the fall, this day, this board meeting in September kind of begins our legislative process with our school board. And I provide you all today with, you know, the four documents. You have the calendar, which we'll go through in just a minute, about how we're going to proceed. And then the second thing, we have last year's comprehensive legislative agenda. And I'll have to chuckle. One of our board members years ago said, you know, wow, am I supposed to really read this? So I said, it's really, just to give you the backdrop, it's really more for my purposes of trying to make sure that I have data. Because I will tell you that many legislators, you know, they are very, very appreciative when we bring them statistics and we have facts and figures about, you know, this is how many students this is going to impact. This is the kind of schedule that we have. It really does, it really does help them, I think, in understanding issues. So I really very much take that seriously. And that brochure, not the brochure, but the legislative document is the fleshing out of a lot of the different issues that are oftentimes in front of the General Assembly. The legislative brochure, which you all probably have the digital version, and hopefully you remember it from our breakfast last year. But it is just the quickest, and they have repeatedly said they appreciate it. It's just a trifold brochure. We try to change the color every year so that we can kind of keep track. But it's kind of a very quick, you know, efficient way of trying to help them understand what our priorities are. I think one of the things that our brochure, well, our real, our documents today that we are sharing with you, it's possible legislative issues that will be for the next year. I would just say to you, this has been one of the most interesting, challenging, all kinds of words attached to this year's legislative agenda, simply because normally, you know, we're just going to meetings and trying to talk to legislators individually. We're trying to contact them about what's coming up in January, in August, except they're in session and they are still working very diligently to get through the challenges that were put in front of them by the budget. You all probably have heard, have seen in the publicity, $555 billion shortfall is what it was nationally for states all over the United States with their state budgets. So in Virginia, we were 2.78, or 2.7 billion shortfall. So this session was supposed to be really focusing a lot on how to restructure the budget. And all of us are very sad that a lot of the issues that I think would have really, really helped us were, well, they were voted on and passed, but there's no funding in the budget for them. So it still gives us hope that at least they understand and appreciate some of the issues that we have put in front of them. But I think right now, the greatest part of my work and all of my colleagues throughout the state, particularly as that, we sort of joke about the big eight, but we do meet fairly frequently and talk on the phone virtually meeting. We have, you know, we really comprise 600,000 students in the state of Virginia, the top school divisions with enrollment. And it's 50% of the population for our public education. So we hope and we count on the fact that people really do, when we bring them an issue, that it's not something that they think is just local. It encompasses, you know, pretty much the whole state. The budget right now is really important to us. I think my last report that I sent to you all mentioned there are four things that we are very, very closely watching. The first one has to do with the changes in the ADM and the fact that our public schools statewide are losing enrollment because of the COVID. And I mean, there's no question that this is what is happening. Some of the parents are, you know, educating their children in private situations. Some of them are homeschooling. So we are losing enrollment that we feel confident is going to come back to us as soon as the whole atmosphere changes in our public school setting. So we are concerned that if they are going to create the budget and develop our basic aid funding, which of course keys off of your average daily membership, if they are going to reduce that based on enrollment figures that we are getting ready to return into them at the end of September, in October, then we are going to have serious shortfalls in our budgets if we do come back to our, you know, regular instructional models. But we also may be losing the ability to have support staff. And anyone that thinks this virtual environment, we don't need all the people that we had before, you all know too well. That's just not true. So we're really working hard on that. Originally, we had thought we're not getting anywhere. They keep saying we'll deal with it in January. I think in the last probably two or three days, we feel like, yes, we're getting their attention. And here again, we're providing them the actual details of how we are, our school divisions are going to be impacted. Another category of funding that we're looking very closely at is the federal dollars through the CARES Act. There is $200 million left in that account. And we have kind of tapped into some of the sources that we rely on for some kind of flavor of what is the governor's thought about where that money is going. And we are very hopeful with that $200 million, it may be transferred directly to public education, simply because if you use it for public education, the accountability is so much simpler than if you start trying to branch out into other kinds of issues. So we're hopeful. Certainly will not know that for a while. Sales tax funding is another thing that's, you know, here again. We kind of had to go back to legislators and help them understand this is going, we're going to take a hit with this as well. So I think overall, it was projected $88 million, excuse me, $188 million is going to be the state impact. And for those of us, when the chart that they put up in front of us, Henrico was listed as losing $3.6 million each year, I'm sure that can fluctuate a little bit. But that's just the loss of revenue from sales tax. So we're getting a lot of support, though, in trying to kind of keep monitoring the revenues. And, you know, they've just had another report from Aubrey Lane, our Secretary of Finance for the state. And they are going to monitor that very closely. And we are very hopeful that it's going to be adjusted, or at least we will, you know, hopefully not take an incredible financial hit with that. Our VRS investment rates, the investment picture was not what they had hoped it would be, but they have indicated to us so far that the rates will be holding steady. And that's always reassuring, because I think we always are concerned about that. Staffing, we obviously know, you all hopefully remember from our last spring report, that we had managed to get bills through to increase the number of school we had managed to get bills through to increase the number of school counselors for schools as well as our EL staffing. Unfortunately, here again, they, they have not been funded. And so we are going to continue to try to work towards getting those issues addressed. I think one of the things that will really help us, and Ms. Atkins, certainly I know when I was listening to you talking about the social emotional needs of our children and how to address those, the state, the Department of Education is going to have a report, I think it's this summer, July, maybe of 2021. They are going to have developed some social and emotional standards and we are hoping that they will be funded and we will be seeing more support and more attention given to some of those positions that really speak to the needs of our children that are outside of instruction, but certainly tied to it in many ways. Then we mentioned about the support cap. We have been arguing this for many years. We feel over and over again, never say die, we just constantly try to help them understand that support position, you can't operate a school division without support positions. And when I think about all of the efforts that our school food service people have made, that is a perfect example, I mean, perfect example of why we need the money for support people. And our teacher salaries, I think we really had started to move the needle on that and getting someone's attention about the fact that we just continue to say, Virginia, I mean, we are ranked 33rd in the nation in our teacher salary levels and yet our state's ability to pay and is in, I think it's like 18 in our ability to pay. And so there are voices continuing to come forward to say, why is there such a gap between our state's economic picture and where we are paying our teachers? So hopefully we will continue with that. Unfortunately, the teacher raise of 2% is another thing that went, went away because of the budget situation. From staffing, we looked at, we always have student issues. I feel very proud that even though we did not get student discipline done, that maybe we thought we were going to defeat some of these bills because we feel very strongly and will maintain that position, that the local school board is the best agency or instrument in trying to address student discipline. But they feel otherwise and we have modified some of their original requests. We certainly will be looking to see if those kinds of issues come back. Instruction is always with us. We are constantly looking to change, for changes that they may be thinking about with their standards of quality, standards of accreditation. I think one of the things that was just brought out in the State Board of Education meeting was that can we start to take a second look at seat time? And some of those requirements that are in the standards of accreditation, that let's just start looking at that, student attendance, and also particularly those of us, certain of our schools that deal a lot with our EL kids, talking about the students that interrupted formal education. We have high school students that are entering our school division for the first time and we're trying to give people some wiggle room with the attendance of those students and the dropout rate of those students because it's not fair. If a school has made every effort they can, a child enters at, you know, sophomore level, maybe even they're as old as a junior by age, but academically they are much, much lower. And yet they stay for a while and then they leave and that's, that's like a black mark for that school. So we're, we're working on that as well. Just wanted to give you an update of, I think, J-LARQ supposedly, I don't know when that report is going to come out. I was trying to find that out before tonight, but they are doing a special research assignment for special education in the state of Virginia. And I think all of us will be very, very interested to see the kind of information that they have gathered. And as related to that, if you all remember, I think we were looking very seriously and got sponsored a bill, our own delegate Ben Walkenberg was a co-sponsor, delegate Leftwich from Virginia Beach was the primary sponsor of HB 1381 that had to do with taking a really in-depth look at the role of our parent advocates. And if we could try to develop some guidelines for what they can best serve our families by doing, that was our intent and we were to have a study done, the bill carried over and we were to have a study done with the Law Faculty of William &amp; Mary. And we are still trying to get that going. I understand they've had lots of other issues to be looking at, but hopefully we're going to try to get some closure as to where that's going to come. It could be that we will just resubmit the bill, which you can always do, exactly the same as it was. Okay? So I think that's pretty much kind of covering where we are. And then, like I said, your calendar, hopefully next, in two weeks' time, I'll come back to you and perhaps get more of your feedback. We'll certainly invite it today, but more of your feedback about what you're hearing and issues that are important to you. And then in the next two weeks, I will submit to you all my draft of this year's legislative agenda. Okay? Questions or comments? I welcome.
Thank you so much for that exhaustive explanation of, you know, our focus. And let me start with Ms. Atkins. Any questions from Ms. Lam?
So thank you so much for your updates. One question I do have for you is around broadband. I know we have several that are talking about broadband and changes perhaps that we can make to areas that are dense, particularly in my district. It's no longer, you know, just a desire or want. It's a utility like drinking water. And so there are other areas similar to mine. Can you share with me what progress has been made on legislation and the push around the expansion of broadband?
Well, it's a great question and it's really interesting how things evolve. Broadband, there was a bill probably six years ago by one of our senators in Northern Virginia that was going to demand that all school divisions have broadband access, you know, robust at a certain level of funding, I mean, at a certain level of connectivity. And Brian Maddox was wonderful. He came and talked to the committee. I think he tried to give them a perspective that it's just, it's a little more complicated than just passing a bill. And so they're really seriously considering it and it's for so many more reasons. I think businesses are pushing it as hard as our K-12 education people are. But I would suggest to you all too, that one of the things that it makes me very, very proud when I go and speak to people and legislators about this issue is the fact that we in Henrico have more or less given people an acceptable model that might be workable, even if you're mountainous regions of Virginia, it just doesn't, you can't put down cable, you can't do the same types of technology that you can do in an inner city. So please know that it is absolutely on lots of people's minds. And here again, I think originally it started out for, you know, to make sure that our schoolchildren had some more of a, it was an equity issue, more of a equal access to information and to instruction and to different kinds of facets of education. Now businesses need it. They desperately need it for their operations, particularly in these last months that we have been, you know, at home instead of at work. So I just would say to you, please just stay tuned and understand and know that we are very much aware of the, you know, the activity that's taking place around that, even though it's, it's tough for us in education to get to commerce and labor, but we try to keep a pulse on those issues.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Admittedly, I can't read my writing, for one thing I wanted to ask you, so I'll have to catch you next time on that one. But I, you know, I think the ADM right now is a huge, a huge issue. You know, it's disappointing to see SB 5069 not go through this session.
Right.
But hopefully we can continue to advocate that. Fortunately, it looks like, I think the last numbers I looked like at Henrico only right now has a 3% drop in enrollment, which is much better than some, some of the other counties. So, oh, I can now read my writing. So the, and then I think you break, bring up a really great point about the teacher salaries, you know, it's not just about, it's not just about the numbers, it's looking at that gap in economics from kind of where we're poised at as a state versus where we rank at in our investment in teachers. And so, you know, it's hard that we had all, a lot of wins in the last legislative session and they just didn't get funded. And I think we felt that almost at a local level with our budget had a lot of wins and then, you know, they couldn't happen. So hopefully the economy will swing up and allow us to fund all these things like the counselor ratio and those sorts of things that are so important. But thank you for your advocacy and we appreciate you. One issue of personal importance to me, and I know at least some other members on the board, is the pupil teacher ratio that I know y'all continue to advocate around.
Right.
And I noticed on our, our one sheet and also in the long document at the end, when it gives our statistics, we give the average PTR. I wonder if we should also look in, just giving some context, how many classes we have over 28 for high school, for example, or how many we have over 20 or 24 for elementary school? Because that's a larger piece of, of really the conversation than just what our, what our PTR looks like. Our PTR is fantastic, right? And if that's what all of our classes looked like, that would be fantastic. It would be amazing, but it's not what, it's, that's the average in different areas of the county and in different schools. It looks very, very different. And Ms. Cancela's head might nod off, she's nodding so hard. But I know, you know, some districts have that struggle. So that might, even if it doesn't go on our one sheet, but just information to communicate when you're trying to advocate for the PTR issue so that they can understand, well, all these averages might say this, but we've got, you know, and I don't know the number for this year, but at one point it was 1,800 classes over third, you know, 28 or 30 and that sort of thing. So to give some context there. All right? That's.
Well, just for a point of reference, I'll tell you, Ms. Shea, we have had, I think it's, it happened twice, and I'm trying to remember if it was maybe like three, four years ago, two sessions ago, we had a bill that was demanding that no school would have, like in their, the state recommends that you have this number of children in an elementary classroom, middle school and a high school classroom, that there would be, you know, you will be out of compliance with your standards of quality if you, your individual classes exceed that number.
Yes.
Wow. There was, yeah, well, it didn't get very far, just because.
I can imagine.
Of, I think in many ways here again, it's just the variation of school divisions and what struggles they have in, you know, they may have, you know, four students in a, say a foreign language class, that's probably an exaggeration. They probably have 12 or 14 in a foreign language class, but then their English classes are like 32. It's just, you know, it's the give and take, or at least those were the testimonial pieces that came in front of them. But you're, I understand exactly where you're coming from, to that teacher that has the 25 to the 28 to the 32 kids, that, that's a very, very different picture, but.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Agrew?
It's good to see you. I just want to put something on your radar. You are, I know you are always plugged into what's going on, but a couple of things related to Maggie Walker, if I could, because I'm the chair of the Maggie Walker Board. And there are things going on as far as funding that we've, we've had this issue for years and I've asked you to watch out for it.
Absolutely.
But if you could be on lookout for anything that mandates admission changes and for Maggie Walker, and since we, you know, Henrico sends students to Maggie Walker, this is near and dear to our hearts, something that affects our schools and our students directly. So changes in admissions, changes in funding, defunding, that kind of thing. If you see anything, if you could, and I'd hope maybe we could put in our legislative agenda, as we've done in the past, advocating for adequate funding for the governor's schools because this is a hot topic down there sometimes. And so I just, if I can put that on your radar.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing it up and I will tell you that that letter that the principal of Maggie Walker at the time sent, who was a former Henrico employee, I might add, very proudly, really got some attention. It really did. So what we can do to fix it, I'm not sure, but certainly appreciate your bringing it back up again in front of the, you know, kind of to the top and I'll make sure I follow through, contact maybe their person that we sometimes see downtown.
Right. Well, and other counties are, had, just because of our lead on this, have, are including this on their legislative agendas as well.
Yes.
And so we have 13 school districts that feed Maggie Walker for all advocating for the same thing. You know, it just makes it more effective, but, but thank you for all you do.
Sure.
It's not, it's a labor of love, that's for sure.
It is indeed, very much so.
Ms. Agrew, you done? Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Cancela?
Yes, just thank you for the update and I support everyone else's comments prior to getting to me. The funding is just paramount, I mean, especially for our teachers and staff that are, especially during this year, have been asked to do more than ever. Just thank you for the work you're doing and I look forward to updates and positive news.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see if we can't deliver that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lam, for giving everything that you can.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Stay safe. Board members, next item on our agenda is the public forum. This is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and speakers will be given two minutes to address the school board. We will follow the sign-up list. Those who have signed up to speak cannot relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system that is on the platform of the stage. Speakers will have a two-minute limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks and the yellow light means you have one minute remaining. We ask that you please stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here today to hear from you, the community, and speakers should speak directly to the board. Unfortunately, we will not be responding to speakers, but I do want to share the sentiments of my colleagues when I say that we as a whole appreciate your attendance here this afternoon. And as always, we are so grateful for you providing us with your input. The first speaker is Kenyon, Amy Kenyon. Ms. Kenyon?
My name is Amy Kenyon.
Hold on one second, Ms. Kenyon, if you don't mind. Can we make sure the mic's on somebody? Thank you, madam. And put it down just a little bit for, thank you so much. There you go. Yep. All right, Ms. Kenyon, I'm gonna restart you two minutes, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. You may begin.
My name is Amy Kenyon and I reside in the Three Chop School District. I have an 11-year-old son who attended Springfield Park Elementary from kindergarten through fifth grade. My son was diagnosed with Attention Deficit Disorder in fourth grade, which makes staying focused and on task difficult for him. So the virtual learning that was implemented in March was a disaster for him and us as a family. When HCPS began steering the communications this summer to their agenda for the online for the first nine, my husband and I felt like we had no choice but to seek out other education options and we made the difficult decision to withdraw our son from home and middle school and enroll him in private school. My son just completed his fifth week of school and he is thriving. Every morning, the kids' temperatures are taken by staff in the parking lot before the parents leave the drop-off area. My son's classroom consists of 17 children in class and three virtual learners. The children and staff wear masks all day, other than when eating at their desk or outside. Benchmark tests are given along with graded tests and quizzes in each subject, so I know for sure that my son is learning what is being taught. I'm here today because I feel that HCPS has failed the parents and teachers who want, need and deserve the choice for the option to return to the classroom. As I have illustrated, where there is a will, there is a way. COVID will be around for the foreseeable future, so I expect there will be bumps in the road, but I feel confident in our new school's ability to handle situations as they arise and that the staff and us as parents will make the best decisions to ensure everyone's safety. Seeing the poor decisions that Henrico County continues to make, such as waiving school accreditations along with cuts in funding that will affect the school system negatively in the years to come due to student withdrawal, I am uncertain if my son will ever return to public school. I plan to lobby and support any legislation that will include vouchers being given to families for education costs, as I believe federal and state money should follow a child regardless of the school they attend. I believe Henrico County has a duty to the stakeholders in this community to find the will and the way and give the parents, children and teachers who want and need to return to the school and the classroom the option to do so and to work towards a feasible plan to accomplish that goal.
Ms. Kenyon, thank you so much. We appreciate your attendance and participation today. Ms. Kenyon, thank you so much. We appreciate your attendance and participation today. Next, we have Rachel Kelly.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Rachel Kelly, and I have students at Jackson Davis Elementary School. In the words of Richard Rohr, "I am here today to ask you to use your power for the common good, the good of our children." Stores, restaurants, bars, movie theaters, daycares, and preschools are all open. Even childcare facilities operating out of the public schools are available, but at a cost. Our children are allowed to go to all of these places, but they are not allowed to return to school to their classrooms. Their peers have been allowed to return to private schools. Parents are being forced to choose to keep their children at home, fending for themselves during school hours, or having to pay for childcare services that were never in the budget. When society shut down in March, it was to flatten the curve and to keep hospitals from being overwhelmed. The curve has been flattened, and most hospitals in our area furloughed employees and emptied out. We were fortunate that we never saw what some hospitals did, so those goals were achieved, and now we need to change our route. In the data that you are collecting for a safe return to school, you are not even looking at the hospitalization rate. You are not even giving substantial data points so that we know what the goal is. In fact, there is no data to support the children not returning to school. You have chosen to take the population that it seems are the least likely to get it and the least likely to transmit it, and you are isolating them in a time of their lives when it is the most important for their social, emotional, and mental health to be surrounded by teachers and peers. We will never see zero COVID cases. What we are seeing, however, are lower hospitalization rates and lower mortality rates from COVID, but a sharp increase in mental health disorders. The AAP, CDC, and the county's health director have all made their recommendations for a return to school. As a former pediatric ICU nurse, I know that children are resilient, but I have also experienced firsthand what a decline in mental health can do. I have been told my entire parenting career to limit screen time, but now that has been dismissed. School counselors are refusing to give presentations on limiting screen time. Our children are struggling. When I asked each of my children to tell me how they were feeling about school, my first grader replied, "It's fine, but I'm just used to seeing my teacher with me. It makes me sad to see her on the computer and not be with me." My third grader replied, "Things are okay, but it's really hard to learn the computer in third grade all at the same time. We are treating our children as if they are grad students. You have taken away basic rights and disregarded medical opinion. At what point does the fear need to be put aside?"
Ms. Kelly, I hate to cut you off. I apologize, but I do have other speakers waiting. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your attendance. We do, and your participation. Next is Rita Track. Is Rita Track here? Next is Fonda Lang. Is Fonda Lang here? Yao Levin. Is Yao Levin here? Kate Crone. Is Kate Crone here? William Kenyon Jr. Dondrea Harris. Hayazman Zimmerman. Kelly Meadows. Jean Teagle. Caroline Jensen. Mariah, or Maria Provenzo. Maria Provenzo. Wendy Miller. Jessica Milligan. Christine Williams. Thomas Sherlock. Shayna Johnson. Alexandra Brothers. We had over 21 persons to sign up. As those watching and listening can see, only two who signed up are able to speak, and we don't normally, we will not normally deviate from our process. But in this case, I'm seeing is that we have allocated this time, and those 20, 20, 19 other persons did not show up. Is anyone else who wants to speak for the board who came? If so, I'm inviting you to come now. Okay. Thank you so much. Again, thank you, Ms. Kenyon, and thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate your Next item on our agenda is going to be our, I'm sorry, I apologize, Madam Superintendent. Let me turn it back over to y'all.
No problem. Seeing as the public forum is over, as you, I think, were just about to lead us to, our next item is the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee update, and Dr. Tighan is here, as has been expected, at each of our school board meetings to provide us with the committee's report and update. So, Dr. Tighan, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am here today to provide an update from the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee, as Dr. Cashwell said. Ms. Gilbert has taken some well-deserved time off, but she'll be back here with me on October 8th. Today's update is based on the past two weeks of data, and as a reminder, the Health Committee meets every two weeks and reviews data shared by the Virginia Department of Health with the local school divisions each week. Here's the agenda for today's presentation. I will review the current data for the week ending September 19th for Henrico County, Richmond City, and the Virginia Department of Health Central Region. I will share the role of our HCPS COVID Task Force, remind everyone of the mitigating strategies that are in place to keep our staff, students, and communities safe, and then remind everyone of the timeline moving forward with some new additions. Here are the individual burden ratings for cases, percent positivity, and outbreaks for Henrico County. The case incident rate per 100,000 for Henrico is 9.8 and has been decreasing for six days. Last week, the rate was 11.4, so we are seeing a decline. This is what we want to see. If the decline continues for 14 consecutive days, then the trend would be seen as decreasing. However, right now, it is still considered fluctuating. The percent positivity has also been decreasing. As last week, it was 7.4%, and this week it is 4.0%. This trend has continued for only eight consecutive days, so the trend is still considering, considered fluctuating. And outbreaks is unchanged from last week and has now been decreasing or steady for 29 days. The trend there is considered to be decreasing. Last month, I promised I would share the data for Richmond today. The case incident rate for, per 100,000 for Richmond City is 11.2, which is 0.2 less than it was last week. This metric has been decreasing for 22 days, so you'll see it shows the trend is decreasing. The percent positivity has also been decreasing. It has gone from 4.9% to 3.8% in one week. This trend has continued for 15 days, and so the trend is also considered to be decreasing. With the outbreaks, outbreaks have been consistent at zero for the past two weeks for Richmond, and this metric is still considered to be fluctuating because it has not exceeded the 14-day criteria for maintaining the same direction. Despite the improvements seen for Henrico and Richmond, the weekly community transmission and preparedness report still indicates the community transmission level for the Central Health District Planning Region is substantial, and the burden is high. As a reminder, the Central Health District includes Southside, Piedmont, Chickahominy, Richmond, Henrico, Chesterfield, and Crater Health Districts. One can clearly see the span of the Central Health District Planning Region in this graphic, given the contrast to all the surrounding regions that have a community transmission of moderate. The Virginia Department of Health continues to partner with Henrico County Public Schools to isolate pertinent information for Henrico County. And I think that's important as we consider the size of the region as well as our individual locality. In addition to monitoring the data, there is a need to monitor adherence to the Henrico County Health Plan and the adequate availability of personal protective equipment, or PPE, for our staff. The structures established to do this begins with the COVID Task Force, which was created in the spring to provide guidance, information, and support in all areas related to the coronavirus outbreak. The central focus of this task force is on protecting the health and safety of students, faculty, and staff. Members of this team include representatives of the Division Leadership Team, the Facilities Department, School Health Services, and the School Safety Office. The transition team formed this summer is a subgroup of the COVID Task Force, and its objective is to ensure all schools and administrative buildings are following all safety and health guidelines, as well as orders from the Governor, the Virginia Department of Education, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Virginia Department of Health when developing plans to transition back into the work environment. An additional subgroup of the task force is the school-based liaison team. All schools had to identify a representative from their school to serve as a liaison to the district's COVID-19 task force. The main role of the liaisons is to oversee personal protective equipment needs for their school, as well as ensure any information pertaining to COVID-19 is shared with the appropriate audience, whether that be staff, students, visitors, or families. The school-based liaisons at most schools is an administrator. Each school-based liaison attended training provided by the transition team, where he or she gained knowledge in the use, distribution, and maintenance of the PPE supply chain within the school. They learned additional information specific to our Henrico County Public Schools Health Plan to include social distancing guidelines, health screenings, and inventory control measures. The school-based liaison also received guiding documents related to the health screenings and the inventory control measures, specific to PPE and cleaning supplies. He or she will be conducting a weekly inventory check to ensure there is at least a four-week supply of PPE and cleaning supplies available within the building. When additional PPE is needed or cleaning supplies, the school-based liaison will complete a reordering form that goes to the HCPS COVID-19 transition team, who will either pull items for our warehouse or place an order. To ensure that schools have the supplies they need to keep everyone safe and healthy, this system has been put in place. Additional roles and responsibilities of the school-based liaison are to ensure that all staff, visitors, and students are adhering to the health and safety guidelines documented in the Health Plan, to include proper wearing of mask, correct and adequate use of PPE, and enforcement of social distancing guidelines. If staff have questions pertaining to anything related to the Health Plan, they are encouraged to be, to seek out their school-based liaison. Although each school has a school-based liaison to oversee the implementation of the Health Plan, I would like to say it is everyone's responsibility to adhere to the guidelines set forth in that plan. I encourage everyone who sees their peers not wearing their mask, not wearing it properly, or not following social distancing guidelines to politely remind them to do so. Speaking about the HCPS Health Plan, I would be remiss if I did not provide an update on PPE within the division. I am happy to report that the, that the Henrico County, that Henrico County Public Schools has received the PPE needed for our staff and students to return to school. We have N95 masks for the school nurses, and we have received 150 cases of gloves. Additional supplies are ordered regularly so we can maintain our inventory of needed PPE, and based on expected usage, the supplies currently on hand should last through winter break. This is a good time to remind everyone of the mitigating strategies that will help keep us safe and healthy as well. These mitigating strategies, if used with fidelity, assist with the lowering the spread of COVID-19 within our schools and our communities. The best ways for people to protect themselves and others are the following: washing one's hands with soap and water frequently, and using hand sanitizer when soap and water are not available; coughing and sneezing into one's elbow even when wearing a mask; completing the health screening process each morning and staying home when answering yes to any question; maintaining appropriate social distancing from others even while wearing a mask; using the personal protective equipment indicated as needed, given one's roles and responsibilities. An example of appropriate PPE might be a nurse caring for a potentially COVID-19-positive individual would include wearing gloves, a disposable gown, an N95 mask, and a face shield. Another example is placing a cough or sneeze guard in a high-traffic area, such as the front desk of a main office of a school. These are just a few examples. And I'd also like to let you know that members of the Safety Office and Environmental Monitoring are checking our schools for compliance. The Henrico County Public Schools Health Plan also provides guidance when there's a positive case of COVID. From the beginning of the school year through Tuesday of this week, there have been 11 positive cases. Contact tracing and collaboration with the Health Department identifies those individuals potentially exposed. These individuals are asked to quarantine to prevent further spread at school and within the community. School staff and the, and the community are notified of any positive cases at their schools. By working closely with the Health Department, Henrico County is privy to the latest guidance for keeping our staff and students healthy and safe. For example, the VDH recently developed a new algorithm for evaluating a child with COVID-19 symptoms or exposure. This algorithm and the corresponding flow chart will help schools know how long students should be removed from school based on the level of new cases per 100,000. And I look forward to sharing more once this process and the corresponding graphic has been finalized by the Virginia Department of Health. The implementation of these mitigating strategies has been critical, as limited in-person learning began last week, as you heard Dr. Cashwell share earlier. Last week, our elementary schools began meeting with pre-K and kindergarten students and their parents, and this week, schools began to bring in select groups of special education students based on their IEPs. Next week, small groups of targeted ESL students will be provided an opportunity for in-person learning. The following week, select career and technical education students will be coming into their learning spaces, which could be a classroom, a greenhouse, or a build-a-house site. Each day, more of our staff are demonstrating how to safely have in-person instruction. The Health Committee will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the mitigation strategies discussed previously as more and more students participate in in-person instruction. As we continue to look forward, Ms. Gilbert and I will be, will provide an update at the October 8th school board meeting, and we will bring forth a recommendation from the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee for the second nine weeks by the October 22nd school board meeting. This timeline provides staff and families with three weeks to make plans should a recommendation be to pivot to more in-person instruction. The committee has proposed administering a survey to teachers and a separate survey to families the week of October 5th to ask their intents should the Health Committee recommend an in-person model, to also include a continuation of a virtual option for the second nine weeks. second nine weeks. Again, I would like to thank the members of the Health Committee for their willingness to share their thoughts and ideas throughout this process, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen. Ms. Atkins?
So, Dr. Tiggen, I sit on the Health Committee, and I want to say thank you. Thank you to you and to everyone, Dr. Avula, and everyone that has been working countlessly, just hours, trying to find answers where there are none. And I just want to say that I am very grateful, because I get to watch the work, not only just provide input, and it's hard. There's nothing simple about this at all. But to come here and stand and provide a presentation that some may enjoy seeing and some just might quite frankly hate, but you come and you stand at the mic and you present confidently, and so I am appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Also, I am ecstatic. It's going to take a lot for me to just stay seated in this chair, because the truth is that the best defense for disease and virus is prevention. And what a wonderful thing to hear, to know, that we are ready with PPE. So that brings joy to my heart to know that, because that is a big piece of the puzzle for me. So thank you for that. I do have one question, actually, a question and a consideration. One question is, if you could share how individuals that want to give PPE or donate PPE could do that? And I'm going to follow that up really quickly with saying, I know we have our FACE team where folks can make donations. We also know that folks can contribute financially through HEFF, but are there any other ways that individuals can donate PPE?
I would suggest reaching out to the Safety Office. I mean, I know that we would appreciate any donations, but we also have to make sure that the quality of the materials donated meet the criteria of need within our schools.
Fantastic.
But Courtney Berry.
Wonderful. So, for those that want to donate, I specifically asked that question because there are some PPE that are appropriate for wearing that makes you feel comfortable, but PPE that enters our school, there is a specific process to assess the quality of it and who it is for. So if there are any questions for those who want to donate PPE, contact FACE or Courtney Berry, our Safety Officer. I just wanted to repeat that, just in case anyone didn't get that from you, Dr. Tiggen. The second piece is around when we're assessing our students and as we're finalizing how they get in the building, when we're assessing our students to come in, it is no secret that some students do come to our building sick. And some parents do give Tylenol before the child gets there, so when the child gets there and you take the temperature check, it's not going to be on the radar that they have a temperature. And so one consideration is in our mitigation plan, and as we train and talk to our nurses, that we explore ways of figuring out how we can get around that, because initially, what will happen is, once the student is admitted and they get in the classroom and the Tylenol wears off, then they have the fever, but they're already in the classroom. So one consideration is to put a little bit of thought of exploration into that, and the committee might have already, but I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I kind of wish I had a confetti cannon today, because our numbers are headed in the right direction, and we have PPE. Like, things are looking good. So I'm pretty excited about that. I have a few specific questions. On Slide 5, we have the state map, and our Henrico numbers look, I would say, really good this week, or, I mean, definitely better than they have been, right? So our Henrico numbers are looking good, but the central region is still in that high burden. Can you, do you have insight on what may have put us in the high burden, even though in Henrico, we're looking a little bit better?
I don't know exactly which localities of the one in that greater Richmond Health District, but it's a, you know, obviously, it's a combination of all of those, and so anyone can impact it, but also, there are levels at which it drops from substantial to moderate, and you can be, you know, as you're moving there, just slight movement in the, in certain localities might not have the impact to lower it for the whole region.
Kind of on that note, as we move forward towards October 22nd and the recommendation that's coming, if Henrico's data looks good, like, today, our cases are in kind of the moderate level, our percent positivity is in the lowest level, and our outbreaks are right on the low to middle boundary. So if our numbers in Henrico looked good, but the regional metric is still high due to either localities that are not contiguous with us and/or data that's only available regionally, would that prevent the committee from giving the recommendation to return?
Not specifically. I mean, the Health Committee is taking in the totality of the information, and so we also have the benefit of having Dr. Avula on the committee, because he is the Chair of SHAB, and so he's able, and his team are able, to help disaggregate the data to be able to focus in if we have any areas of concern. So that allows us to have questions answered, and I think make decisions that are based more focused on what could more likely impact our community.
Great. I know that question has come up a lot with my constituents and their concern with the size of the region, so I think knowing that that is going to be taken in context when looking at our specific numbers as well, I think is really important. So thank you. Can we go back to Slide 3, please, which is the Henrico County data? And we have these three metrics. So we have cases, percent positivity, which I know, you know, that the finite definition of what they mean. Can you kind of help put us in context, so both our cases and our percent positivity have fallen? Can you help me give me understanding on what that means more broadly? Are we testing more and having less cases? What does that mean?
It could be a combination, but oftentimes, when testing does go up, that number will go down, just because of each one that's positive, a new case counts less.
Right. You have a larger denominator.
Right. It's a mathematical function as far as that is concerned. You can also just have fewer people testing positive, you know, without having an increase in testing. And with the percent positivity, again, that's looking at the results. So often, you know, there are times when it's related to the volume of testing, and there's times when it, you know, or, it's probably a combination of the amount of testing and the number testing positive. But going down is always a good thing.
And then with the outbreak, so this is one of the metrics that I've received feedback on with the most scrutiny. Can you explain why the outbreak number is being considered when those cases are already, you know, in some of the metrics important? Why is the outbreak number important to consider?
Because that really tells the spread within a community, because that's when you've got one person that was positive, that then someone else who's connected to them in contact tracing becomes positive, and it's believed to be a result of that, because of the, you know, duration of time between the first case and the second case, and proximity, and so that connection between them can lead to what, to the community spread, which can be, you know, significant, if people, depending on areas that they live, if they live in closer proximity, if they tend to live in multifamily housing, it talks more about what's happening in the community. It's not really as much about our schools as the community, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That helps provide some information around that. You talked a little bit about our school-based liaison, I believe, is that what they're called?
Yes.
The school-based liaison. So if someone comes in our school for maybe one of these limited in-person settings, or a screener, or some, you know, somebody from the community is in our school for a reason, or one of our staff members in the school, and observes a non-adherence to our health plan, I loved your suggestion to politely remind them of the importance. But if they're, you know, kind of, if that doesn't work, or they're not seeing adherence, where should that be shared? How should that be, how should that information be shared? Because I know we want to address it and improve, and people posting on social media don't, that doesn't provide an opportunity for us to truly address it and improve. So how should people go about that?
I would suggest that they ask to see an administrator and share that concern in the building with the building leader.
Thank you. And then my last questions are around the survey that we're going to send out at the beginning of October. And just some comments, actually, some feedback about that survey. I know Dr. Cashwell and I have talked about this, but I think it's so important for this survey to include any option that we think could be feasible. I know this summer, we thought we knew what was feasible, so we sent out a survey, and by the time we got to our town hall, we thought maybe some different things were feasible, and by the time we got to the vote, different things were feasible, because this is a fluid situation, and things are changing. So we want to make sure we have as comprehensive data that we have, that we need from our families, kind of of all the parts and pieces. And so just making sure, you know, I know that we'll get to see that survey, and I appreciate y'all sharing that with us, with the draft with us before it goes out, but making sure we're being real specific in the words we use, and including as many options as possible that we think could maybe possibly happen, in order to get the data we need to truly figure out what our attendance in the building versus out of the building would be, because that is going to impact what we're able to, what's truly doable. So. That is all for me, Reverend Cooper. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Ogden?
Just a couple, sorry, a couple of questions. Hospitalization rate, we had one of our speakers ask about that. And are we looking at that? Do we factor that in at all?
The hospitalization rate is included in this report, where the transmission report, it is not included in the Henrico-specific.
Okay.
So that's one of the differences.
If you could go back to that other one, that'd be, all right. So that answers her question, when she said, you know, are you looking at that? Well, we are. It is included. But what I've had more than anything else as far as comment about how we're arriving at this data, I mean, we've had everything from, you're not transparent about it, which we get accused of a lot, but I don't know how you can be more transparent in what we're given, what we have. But there are complaints from the community at times, where we are looking at this huge region, and we say we have substantial transmission and high burden at this point, but in Henrico-specific, we are very, we're at 4% for our infection rate. But, so I thought if you could just address, why do we look at this big region? What, just, again, adding to the transparency of the why that we do it this way, so people will understand. I think this is a kind of a burning question for folks.
And we start, the original information was presented to us in this manner, and it does impact, you know, while the region is large, and it would be nice if it was maybe a little bit smaller, this is what is available and what the Virginia Department of Health has given to schools. And we know our families don't just live in a bubble in Henrico County. So there is some merit in what's happening in surrounding counties, you know, and that's why, too, that we look at this Henrico-specific data, as well as even the Richmond City data. And, you know, it's, we're at the point where I think we're going to be able to access Chesterfield and Hanover data. So that will help us, you know.
We can't access that at this point?
A lot of what has been shared is shared specifically within a health district, but they, the Health Department, the Virginia Department of Health, is working to make things more transparent in posting things on their website. So I'm anticipating more things will be available in the next week or so.
Well, I'll go back to something Ms. Atkins said. I think you guys are such a great job, and it is an impossible job. I mean, I say this all the time to constituents and anybody who listens. It's not like we have a book on the shelf that tells us, how do we handle a pandemic? And so we're, sometimes we are creating the process forward in real time. And so I think coming up with the data that we have that guides us, we are trying to be as transparent as possible with what we've got. And so letting people know that you don't necessarily have access to some things is important to do. But, I mean, I have, in a very long email that I'm sitting here looking at, that asks why we only, why aren't we looking at Henrico and Richmond? And we are.
And.
And so I think that's important to note, that we are.
And if people remember, when I stood up here first in July, you know, I believe it was, we only had positivity data to look at.
Right.
You know, and as time has gone on, more and more data has become available, you know, and we do, we do look at data, that's new data that's available, and that's part of what the Health Committee's role is, is to look at that and help decide what will make the decision for Henrico.
Well, and I think, too, people have, you know, it's a new normal, and we're getting into routines. I had a parent not long say, you know, schools are, schools are closed, but everything else is open. I wish everything else was open. And, you know, we have to remember that we are still under a state of emergency. We still, every restaurant, every business that is open still has to comply with state mandate restrictions, and mask-wearing, and occupancy datas, and occupancy restrictions, et cetera, where things aren't normal. And I think people are, in a lot of ways, beginning to, they're so accustomed to it now, but, you know, we still have to worry about keeping kids safe. And while our kids, we do now have reports coming in across the state and the nation of children getting sick. No matter what we do, if we stay closed or we reopen, kids will get sick. And that's a, that's sort of a fact. It's a hard thing to say, me, children are getting sick whether we're in school or not. Adults are, and we have families we're trying to protect, et cetera. So I think we're all doing the best that we can in going forward, but thank you again for all the work that y'all are doing and bringing it to us. And we look forward to a couple of weeks from now, and we'll have decisions to make. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogden. Ms. Cancela?
Yes, well, Ms. Ogden, thank you so much for asking why we're using data outside of Henrico County in our metrics.
Absolutely.
That's probably the most asked question.
It is.
That I've received as well. Have we looked into, at this point, what is the status and the quality of the HVAC systems and the water quality in our schools? I know we spoke about this back in July. Where are we there?
Absolutely. And I know that Susan Moore has, our Director of Facilities, has had this as a priority, that they are reviewing all of their mechanical systems with an engineering consultant, as well as building automation experts, to determine, you know, the type and extent of mechanical system changes that need to be completed. They have over 500 different systems that are being reviewed and adjusted. All of our buildings have been flushed, meaning that continuous airflow for an extended period of time. It was for a full week before we had staff back in our buildings. And then they're flushed regularly. They'll be flushed, again, extensively like that, before there would be any full return of students, as well as they do it two hours every day before and after staff are in the building. In addition, they have, you know, our water, water fountains have been turned off, but they are flushed regularly to keep the flow of water through them. And their outside air provisions are being maximized in accordance with system designs. Their building air intakes and exhausts have been reviewed with the appropriate spacing and prevention of cross-contamination, so your intake and outtake aren't pulling from each other. The filters have been upgraded. The filters have been upgraded based on the system designs, and exhaust fans are being checked and repaired to ensure operation, to help assist our HVA systems. And building set points are being adjusted to the ASHRA, Recommended Temperature Range, and ASHRA is the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. And the building automated sys, automation systems are checked daily to review their system functions on all the HVAC major components for proper operation. And any system, anomalous, anomalous, and, any, any concerns that are raised are checked and repaired as required. So, I hope that gives you kind of a...
It does, it does. Thank you. I'm just trying to, you've already mentioned PPE, you've gone through the metrics and how we've improved there. I know when we discussed this at length in July, at the end of July, these were some concerns that we still had some work to do. At this point, what, what else do you think we still need to work on? What are our barriers at this point to discussing a possible in-person return?
You know, I think we're still looking for the number of cases to come down. We're, you know, still looking for compliance with, with the use of PPE within our buildings. And it just, you know, we've kind of started a little campaign that see something, say something. We have to protect each other, and it's easy, it, it's not habit yet, but it will be. And those are all things that will directly impact what those cases are. But we, you know, I think we are close to where, you know, return is possible.
And just for those watching who may have missed this, but this is also a widely asked question, often asked, why are we predominantly virtual for the first nine weeks, whereas private schools are not? Can you just, if you wouldn't mind saying why one more time?
Well, I think, you know, one of, one of the things are that the private schools, as you heard from one of the speakers, you know, have very small class sizes. That's one of the things that they have the ability to do. And, you know, that helps with social distancing that's required in the classrooms. Most of them are not, not using transportation to get their kids to and from school, you know, and as we know, transportation is, you know, we know that will be a barrier as far as that we have to address as far as getting kids back into school. It might take longer in the morning to get them there, longer in the afternoon, but most private schools don't deal with that. I mean, I know that one private school who's, they're just transitioning on the, they just transitioned, I guess, back to a full return. There's four to six kids in a classroom, and, you know, that makes social distancing easier and...
Sure does.
So...
Okay. And then lastly, you mentioned this survey, what, October 5th?
The week of October 5th, yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask staff to be sure they include details. I know Mrs. Shea asked for all of the options potentially available to be included. I'd like to ask for as much detail so that parents, parents, students, teachers, staff clearly understand the options that they choose on this survey, when, when they make their selection, as to sync, you know, what percentage perhaps synchronous, what percentage perhaps asynchronous, if there would be any teacher-staff changes associated with it. I don't know what it looks like, but just if the surveys would actually have more specific, clear questions.
And I will say, we have focus groups that we are meeting with, principal, teacher, parent, to gather information to as far as, so that we have feedback that can be shared with the Health Committee to be able to know, have additional information as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Chair Cooper.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Dr. Taggum, could you just stay there one second? Ms. Ogden, would I like a redirect?
Yes.
Just a quick little note, I couldn't help what you said about the, that private schools, four to, some of them, four to six, so I just did some quick math. We have roughly 50,000 students. We would need 8,333 classrooms. Just throwing that out there.
But I could, but I could stand up here and say, none of our classes are over 25.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Taggum, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, that concludes our Health Committee report. Thanks for the great questions and suggestions from all board members, and we've certainly taken note of those as we continue this important work and, and that shared goal of returning to more in-person instruction. All right, the next item is related to a series of policies that have previously been shared for the board's review, and now I'm seeking your approval on those policies. So, for the first one, I'm seeking your approval of School Board Policy P2-03-001, Board as a Body.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P2-03-001, Board as a Body?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P2-04-006, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P2-04-006, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogden, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-04-005, Demonstration and Strikes.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-04-005, Demonstrations and Strikes?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-05, Conduct.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-05, Conduct?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogden, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved, seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy is approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-06-003, Suspension or Expulsion.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-06-003, Suspension or Expulsion?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-06-004, Suspension of Bus Riding Privileges.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-06-004, Suspension of Bus Riding Privileges? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-06-008, Reassignment of Students to Alternative Education Programs Following a Criminal Charge or Conviction.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-06-008, Reassignment of Students to Alternative Education Programs Following a Criminal Charge or Conviction?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-12-010, Guest Speakers During School Hours.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-12-010, Guest Speakers During School Hours? So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogden, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P10-08-002, School Attendance Zones.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P10-08-002, School Attendance Zones?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The next item, 6.01, is related to comprehensive redistricting, listed as an update here. Mr. Sorenson's going to come forward to share some information with the board, remind the public of the direction the board last provided administration-related to redistricting and garner the board's feedback related to next steps. Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am going to do just what Dr. Cashwell said and walk through a couple of slides with you, and then take notes as we prepare to move forward, as you direct us. So, just a history of the process. The first committee meeting was held a little over a year ago, September 9th, 2019. Between September 9th, 2019 and March of 2020, there were a series of committee meetings with a committee to refine maps. We also had some public review sessions of those maps. And through the process that, early March 2020, we took input. So, we've received input when we had public review of the maps. Of course, we've received email, you all received comments, we had public comments at the board meetings. Through all those comments we received in various formats, the committee did work on the maps and really refined it down to two options, option D4 and option E4. And then as they prepared to move forward with their recommendation, on April 6th, you all suspended the process due to COVID-19 for health concerns for the community. So, at this point, that's where we are. The process has been paused, and so, possible steps for moving forward would include resumed the paused comprehensive redistricting. We could end redistricting with no further action, or we could look at targeted reassignment of students to address specific board concerns. Whatever direction we take, it's really important that we, we wrap up the process by early winter, to give our families time to plan for the following school year. These changes will go into effect in September 21, when the new schools open. So, with that, it's just a quick history and possible steps moving forward. Certainly, take comments or questions or direction from you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sorenson. Since I'll start to my left, I'll start to my right, Mrs. Cancela.
Where does one begin?
Really?
So much has happened since April 6th. I know when, when I think back to redistricting and the committee's work and staff's work, everyone just did, was so dedicated, and the countless hours everyone spent, and, and I greatly appreciate it, and I do value the work and the maps brought forward. And that's where we stopped. The Brooklyn District, as, as I've said many a time from, from up here, and when I advocated prior to sitting here, the Brooklyn District has been subject to overcrowding for years and needs capacity relief. I also believe that in addition to, or how we get there is not only looking at the work done by the 67-member independent committee. I believe it's of the utmost importance for this board, this group of board members, to proactively plan, budget, and set priorities related to redistricting and capacity. I think we need to consider enrollment data and trends, data associated with new development and rezoning projects, prioritize our facility needs, budget, talk about the strategic plan goals, look at the relevance and demand of our specialty center programming and special programs in our schools, focus on feeder, feeder schools and feeder patterns. I know I was previously mentioned how many feeder middle schools Tucker had, and it has five. And I believe it still had five in the maps brought forward when we paused the process in August, I mean, in April. I would like to say that contrary to feedback I've received and heard, there isn't an exodus. Everyone is talking about ADM, and while current enrollment is slightly less than projected, at Glen Allen High School, there is not an exodus of students. Matter of fact, we've gone from 103% to 107% capacity. And as we reimagine our high schools, I, I think we should do the same thing as to where we were on the redistricting process. I look at what our community's been through and where we need to focus our, our work and time, and currently, I, I see the process as potentially a Phase 1, Phase 2. I think, and again, this is just me, I see it as hotspot projects. For me, I consider a hotspot is Holiday. It's doubled in size. And I want to talk a little bit about, about what I see there and, and ask you a few questions. And then I see as a Phase 2 is a broader, more comprehensive, after all the things I listed earlier, discussed, and planned. I do not wish to do a Band-Aid. We saw a Band-Aid redistricting process, no disrespect, three years ago, that didn't fix the problem. And I would like for this board to be very proactive in its planning and budgeting and, and how we look at capacity and programming. As I look at Holiday, I would like for it to impact as few families as possible, especially during this time of COVID. And I was looking at the, just doing my own analysis of programming in our schools and where I could provide relief in the Brooklyn District, and I believe it's at the pre, pre-K level. And as to COVID and budget cuts and capital plan delays, project delays, I think, wasn't it true that the, the Fairfield District Elementary School was going to help relieve capacity to pre-K? Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. That was one of the discussions with the Fairfield Elementary School, is that until the relief was needed in that area for a full elementary school, we would put some preschool classes in there to, to allow space for that. And of course, that does provide relief to other schools, as you bring this case in.
Okay. So, in the absence of that, and also in looking at where my Brooklyn District students are and where my capacity issues are, through data I requested with staff, it looks like we could make a difference across the Brooklyn District by moving approximately 218 Brooklyn District students in pre-K to the space, new capacity space at Holiday. I would like for that to be up for consideration as a hotspot project. For me, that would help bring, relieve some capacity and, and bring Brooklyn District students to Holiday, Brooklyn District zone students, because right now, I currently have students at Crestview, going to Crestview all the way from Treve.
Correct.
Just so that fellow board members understand the capacity issues in the Brooklyn District. And now we come to, as I was looking at creative capacity solutions outside of pre-K, I thought about the Glen Allen A Center. And having sat on the Design Committee this year, I heard that there were 800 seats associated with that facility. Is that true, Mr. Sorenson?
That, that sounds correct, yes, ma'am.
And I thought, could that be used as temporary capacity for the bubble of students that would, are districted to, or zoned to go to Glen Allen High School? Because the bubble is currently 7th to 10th grade students. Because the bubble is currently 7th to 10th grade students, right?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
I thought, could we use that if it could get built? Because it was in the capital plan for 10, I believe it was $10 million last year and $27 million this fiscal year? Can you update me on that?
Sure, I can walk through that. So in the FY '20 CIP for last year, there was $10 million in FY '20. That was for the design of the facility. So county only approves one year at the time of the CIP, but in the requested years, the out years, there was $27 million requested in FY '21 this year. That was last year's CIP.
Okay, so what do, do you know, it was mentioned at the Joint Board of Supervisors, School Board Work Session, that the capital plan. It was mentioned that the Glen Allen A Center, there were not, there weren't funds? I think Mrs. Coates said there were not funds. I don't recall voting on a capital plan as a board member yet. It's coming up for discussion. Can you tell me how 2016 bond project could go from being funded to unfunded?
Sure, so let me walk through something with you. So again, there was $10 million in FY '20. Some of that money was redirected to support the high school. So a million and a half was left in FY '20 after the transfer occurred. So in the FY '21 request from the school board, we've requested the 27 million that we talked about a minute ago that was originally in '21, plus that eight and a half million dollars. So we requested in FY '21, $35 and a half million. And then COVID came on. And of course, there's a lot of financial concern, certainly our operating budget went through it, the CIP went through some of the same review, not knowing exactly how COVID is going to play out in our economy. So in the CIP, if you look at the CIP that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, almost every CIP project for '21 was unfunded. There are a couple of exceptions, but almost every project was unfunded, really to give time to understand what happens to the finances due to COVID.
Okay, so it was really just, it's a priority? Is it a capital plan prioritization such that we had projects in the works and then delayed as to COVID?
Correct, so it's something we would definitely talk about when we do the CIP in a month or two. I mean, we would reprioritize our projects and then list what we request funding for. And that's all part of the CIP process.
And then I don't, I just want to ask Dr. Cashwell. I know this hasn't been the process in the past as we plan for our capital needs, but I would, if it's the will of the board, I would very much like to have a joint Board of Supervisors, School Board Work Session to discuss capital plan projects and priorities as we move forward. As Mr., I believe Mr. Brandon mentioned, I was having more meetings, didn't he, at the June meeting? So here's our chance.
I've taken note of your request.
Thank you.
I'll certainly make that count.
Well, all of this to say, I've already mentioned the phased approach that I support. And the majority of the feedback I've received supports this, that this is where our students, teachers, and parents want us to focus our time, which is getting, working on virtual learning and second quarter in person. What does that look like? And I actually, I think this board just needs time to proactively plan and budget and do it right and not have to do it again. And that's where I stand on redistricting. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Let me skip over Ms. Ogbonn, Ms. Shea, you next.
Okay, all right. So I definitely agree with Ms. Cancela on, with the CIP process to either have a joint meeting with the BOS, if that's the will of the board, or at the very least, if someone from the Board of Supervisors could be present at the CIP presentation to us, much like Dr. Cashwell attends the Board of Supervisors meetings to give them updates about school. I think it would be helpful to have a representative of some sort from the government side here when we're talking about the CIP process, since that's really something that we have to work together on. I appreciate the phased approach that Ms. Cancela suggested. I think there are red, urgent, flashing red lights kind of issues that we have. We have three schools opening. Now, the two high schools don't have significantly more capacity, so I don't know how my other board, the other board members feel, but I wouldn't consider those urgent red flashing issues for next year. Holiday, on the other hand, as Ms. Cancela pointed out, is doubling in size. So that's a significant issue and I appreciate her creative approaches to that. I also, when I look at our enrollment numbers, when we're looking at this, I think it's important for Phase 2 to have enrollment numbers from September 30th, 2021. You know, earlier I alluded to, you know, the last numbers I looked at, we only have a 3% dip in our enrollment for this year, but some of those populations have moved around. And when I'm looking at capacity that we currently have for this year, all but one of my schools is now under 100% capacity. And I don't know what that will look like next year. I don't know if that's truly indicative of, you know, the long-term enrollment for those schools. And I think it would be reckless for me to make moves of students based on numbers that I don't know if they're going to be accurate long-term. So I would really like each of us to look at if my, as I listen to what my other colleagues have to say, if the rest of the colleagues agrees with this phased approach that Ms. Cancela put out. Look at, you know, talk a little bit about what do we see as Phase 1 huge issues? Like even with the de-increased enrollment, in the Three Chop district, we have schools at 112%. And in the Brooklyn District, we got schools at 107%. As well as those are both the districts with the most explosive level of development, you know? And so, you know, fortunately, in the Tuckahoe district, like I said, I only have one school this year that's over capacity. I also have very, very slow growth in terms of development. So I don't foresee capacity for my schools being a Phase 1 issue. For me, that would be more of a Phase 2 issue. A Phase 1 issue for me, that I think is the most urgent in my district, is not actually based on capacity. For me, when I look at the most urgent issue in my district, it is based on equity. Specifically that at the middle schools, which I had also spoken to during some of the redistricting talks that we had on the days back in the spring. When I look at the middle school in my district, which is Kuyakasen Middle School, it has a 50, last year it had a 52% free and reduced lunch rate. The two middle schools on either side of it are Tuckahoe Middle School with a 32% free and reduced lunch rate and Pocahontas Middle School with a 22% free and reduced lunch rate. I think there are some small moves that we can make between some of those schools that maintain and keep elementary school communities together that can provide more equity in the economic, in the disparity there between the economic deprivation. And so when I look at the needs of redistricting for my district, again, I'll sum up. I don't think in Phase 1, I have broad scale capacity issues that need to be dealt with. I would like to see September 30th, 2021 enrollment data before I make any capacity moves. But I do think we have a real inequity at the middle school level that needs to be addressed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea, Ms. Atkins.
So thank you, Chris, for your presentation. It is appreciated in trying to figure out how we move forward in a way that's respectful and giving the utmost respect to those who have provided and sacrificed time, in some cases, money, and a ton of emotions in allowing themselves to be vulnerable and even coming into this auditorium and sharing how they truly feel about what's going on in their schools and what they want to see in the future. So this is appreciated, you trying to find some way for us to move forward. Mrs. Cancela, I do agree with having a joint meeting with our Board of Supervisors. I think it's wise for us to be in step together as we both are learning what our new environment looks like, because that's impacting where we're going. So I do agree with that. The next piece I'm just going to address right to my district who are sending me messages now. I hear you, not one more thing. I need you to know that I am focused on quality of instruction, wellness, and equity. I understand that figuring out how we get our kids back in the building is number one for me. And I agree, I do not want to get kids back in the building or for those that want to keep your kids at home and you start to get into a groove and then next thing you know, 2021, you're crying trying to figure out, okay, now my child doesn't go to this school anymore. So I understand the distraction, I understand the disruption, and I do hear you. So for me, in addressing the school board and Dr. Cashwell as well, please know that redistricting is not a top priority in the sense of trying to make a decision right now. It is not. But I do know that moving forward is important. I do need additional information because the information before is not the same as it is today. And in order to make a decision for the future, you have to look at your past and make an assessment of all of it. And there are some pieces that we don't have, or maybe it's just me. So when I look at the numbers of where we are regarding enrollment, that is not how it looked before. I certainly don't know what it's going to look like a year from now. And so to have me make a decision based on faulty information or a lack of information is just not right. And so those are my comments and that's my address to you as well. Again, quality of education, whether you choose to put your child in the building or whether they learn from the church, their social emotional wellness, that whole dimensions of wellness that I preach about, that is important to me. And then equity, specifically around resources. Because regardless of if your child moves, the resources that surround them and the quality of instruction inside the building or wherever they're learning has to be at top of mind. And so I want to reemphasize that that is exactly what I'm doing right now.
Reverend Cooper, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins, no, I'm sorry, now Ms. Ogbonn.
Thank you. I agree with you, Ms. Atkins, that it's kind of like families have said, we have enough to do right now. And I think we all feel that and we all hear that. We've had, the community itself has enough to endure. And I totally, I feel that, I do. I do have two problems, though. I have two schools that are bursting at the seams. And that is not going to get any better. I could wish and hope that it would, but the projections for Rivers Edge are very high. The, what's at Colonial Trail right now, very high numbers. And so what I would like, I'll tag on to what Ms. Cancela said, that right now and in the immediate future, if you want to call it Phase 1, whatever words you want to put on it, but I would like to suggest that the wonderful work that the committee did, and I'm so appreciative of, that we look at map D4. We forget E4 even exists, I'm going to get very specific. That we eliminate map E4, we look at map D4, which I think was, for most people, the most palatable map. So being very specific and we look at, for me, I look at what map D4 does for Colonial Trail and for Rivers Edge. And for Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge, it sends more children to Cackly, whereas there's room. It's fairly simple. It makes some moves that I think need to happen for capacity reasons. We just cannot continue to have Rivers Edge, especially as crowded as it is. It's compromising the education that the children get. And when that happens, you have to do something. And so I would look at changing that on map D4 and leaving the rest of Three Chop alone. I mean, I'm like Ms. Shea, it's like the rest of my schools, well, it's tight in places. It's not so that we need to do something now when people have enough going on. And I think if we address, for me at least, these two areas and we take the current, we know that we're going to get census data in the future. We will have, we will be able to get that census data and now analyze it. We will also have a clearer picture of where our CIP is going to be. So for example, is the addition at Haver Creek going to happen? Is a new school at River Mill going to happen? Is, you know, we have these things that are up in the air. We can't get answers to them right now for funding reasons, but also because we're in the middle of the things that we're in. So I really am not in favor of resuming redistricting in the form that we were in when we paused it, but I do think we have some things we need to take care of. And so I would, I would hope we would go that way. So basically, what I would ask, if this, I mean, I think we need to kind of come to a consensus, but you know, that's my two cents for my district, but we go to D4. If, Adam, there we go.
Thank you for sharing.
And then we'll probably go back around again, but yeah.
Well, I think Ms. Shea wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, Ms. Ogbonn, I just want to, I think I understand what you're saying. I want to make sure everybody listening is understanding because as soon as you say the word "map" and as soon as you say a letter, like, everything's starting. So let's be really, let me just repeat what you're saying to make sure we're being really explicit. You would like to use the D4 map for your area of Rivers Edge, Colonial Trail, that area.
That little, yes.
You are not proposing to use it across the county for the first phase. You are not proposing to use it in
Any of the rest of the schools in my district, absolutely.
In the secondary or high school, middle school, high school. It is simply a solution for your hotspot, your flashing red light issue.
Absolutely.
Perfect, I just wanted to
And the reason why is because I do respect the work that the committee did. They, I really do. And they looked at where was a good way, which area should we shift? What areas would work to move kids into Cackly, for example? And so I think that, I look at that and that's honoring some of the work that they did, but I want to carve that little piece out. And the rest of Three Chop stays the same as it is today. So for example, my vision is that Mr. Sorenson could come to us and I'm not, you know, talking about any of the other hotspots. He could come to us and say, a new map of attendance zones for Henrico County shows this and it's that D4 kind of superimposed right there in the upper part of the county. And the rest of it would stay the same, except, and I know Ms. Cancela has some changes or something, but I just know for me, that would be really the only thing I've got to do or I've got to have a school that's about 140% capacity in a couple of years.
Ms. Cancela?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, based on your reference to D4 maps, my hotspot currently is Holiday and Glen Allen High School and Holiday, but I'm not referencing any maps when I'm speaking of my hotspots. I'm just trying to think creatively and with consideration as to Holiday is the hotspot. I'm trying to minimize the impact to my families and not use D4 for Holiday at this time, but to alleviate overcrowding across my district at the elementary level with pre-K programs.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
I just want to be very clear so that my families don't get upset.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
In essence, I think that we're kind of saying, Ms. Ogbonn, this is my interpretation, that you know with certainty that that swatch works for your communities, what you're saying. So you weren't imposing that we take that map and just use it across the whole.
Oh, no, no, not at all. It makes so many changes and it moves thousands of students. I'm not even sure how many this little small area it would move. We'd have to look.
We'd have to look, right.
Do you even know, Chris?
No, ma'am, I don't know that, but it's really just that northwestern part of the county. We can cut out a little snippet of that and do that.
It would involve Colonial Trail, Rivers Edge, and Cackly. And maybe a few going into Springfield Park.
Could be Springfield Park, as you kind of shift folks a little bit to make room, correct? Yes, ma'am.
But it's minor shifting, but over the course of the next several years, it would alleviate the overcrowding, like I said, especially at Rivers Edge. Like I said, especially at Rivers Edge, we are, there's no room at the end.
Yeah, so so I I guess the question Ms. Sorenson and I have for high schools, do you have the capacity numbers available right now? Just can tell me, I don't know, I don't remember offhand.
I do, yes, sir.
Give them to me, would you?
For the high schools. Deep Run is, uh, sure, print this bigger, I'm sorry, is almost 1,900?
No, no, not 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 the number of students, the percentage of capacity.
Oh, the percentage, I'm sorry, sure. Deep Run is 101.9%, 102%. Freeman is 104%. Glen Allen is 107%. Godwin is 93%. Henrico 77%. Hermitage 81. Highland Springs 104. Tucker 87. And Verona 73. That's based on the September 21st enrollment.
So we have four high schools total that are over 100%. We've got Deep Run at 102, we have Freeman at 104, Glen Allen at 107.
And Highland Springs at 104, yes, sir.
Sure, so we, I mean, that's the error margin is plus or minus, what, two, up or down?
It shouldn't change much this far, correct.
And so you have, for instance, we can talk about capacity with the Highland Springs, the Henrico, and then like, say, Hermitage, Hermitage being more central, Highland Springs and Henrico being more eastern. And then we haven't even specifically spoke about the utilization plan for the old Highland Springs High School, which was that 300,000 square feet building, foot building, you know?
Right about.
Yes, thereabouts, yes.
About 300,000 square feet that we have there, I mean, so has possibly so far. I guess for me, the segue is, you know, when we pause this redistricting back at our meeting, you know, I was specific as far as I, my statement in regards to given where we are in the pandemic, you know, to Ms. 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 Atkins's point about the stress level that the community is having and the concern for the community, that's still big for me. I think across the board, we do have hotspots. And like I said then, I mean, I think that we need to address those hotspots, but comprehensively, I think it's challenging when we have some uncertainties per the CIP, per the funding for projects. We have a a high school that is going to be vacated, that we don't know, we ain't going to do with it yet. So that coupled with, you know, the the attendance as far as numbers, our 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 capacity plus attendance, I just, it's it's very nebulous for me right now with the enrollment data not really being specific. I mean, I think that we should, you know, personally, deal with hotspots across the district and then figure out what that means going forward, if that alleviates what's necessary. Because I think to what everybody's saying, with the CIP, you know, what projects that we 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 put, we put into place, you know, we have allocated a space for elementary school that we approved in the Fairfield District, but right now there's no funding source attached to it, correct?
Correct.
So you have that. We know, we know specifically that Holliday, Highland Springs and Tucker will be online. We know that. But again, you look at the old Highland Springs building, which can serve, it's it's centrally located, you know, you've got 64, 295 there, just like we did with with Wilder. I mean, we made that decision, put the GISA there. Kids from all over the county are going to GISA in the Fairfield District off of 295 at Wilder. So I think that the old Highland Springs, the building that they're in now will be definitely a gem when we look at high schools we imagine, we look at our CTE program, we look at what's going on. So I I I, that's my opinion. I just think that we need to deal with our hotspots across our county and then not put that additional stress on our families. They've got enough to worry about right now. We need to look at what the data is going to be. We need to talk about getting back in school, when that's going to look like next month. I mean, it's a lot, and so we need to look at that in context of our redistricting. So that being said.
Well, and can I add one more thing, something I I didn't say? I I think you bring up a really good point, and we've kind of, several of you really have hit on it, is we've got Highland Springs High School that we can utilize for programs. So I would love for our staff to to look at our programming, especially at the high school level, look at specialty centers, look at what can we do to, for example, we've got some high schools where there's room. Could we add a specialty center? Can we add programming that will sort of level out the the enrollment across our high schools a bit? And so, you know, like you said, at Wilder, we had, we had kids who now come from all over the county. And our specialty center program is so successful and, you know, we could increase our capacity, we can add a center, whatever we do. I think that exploring our options that way would be also really wonderful thing to do.
Ms. Shea, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, you know, I think I'm starting to hear consensus here. I think it's important, as Ms. Atkins said, our families are are dealing with so much right now and so much uncertainty. I would love if we could come up with kind of a general timeline that we're talking, both for hotspots, and maybe that can be a little bit more specific of a timeline for hotspots. And then also, just so our families have an idea, what would we be talking about for the rest of the story? You know? And I think that by giving our families an idea, it's taking some of the stress off their plate, by giving them some, you know, waiving some of that uncertainty. So what do we got?
Well, let me just say this real quick, and I'll let you, you know, I agree with you in that comment about, you know, the story, right? So when the pandemic hit, I think the story, you know, the chapters changed a little bit, if I can, you know, use that analogy. And so how do we complete this book, you know, with the story being altered? That's that's the question that I would raise. I mean, I think that they want some certainty and we, you know, there's a Pandora's box that, you know, Ms. Consella listed a lot of stuff, Ms. Ogborne, a lot of stuff, that we can address in different ways with with a vacant building, with new buildings coming on. And so how does that, you know, get looked upon with the ability to add another elementary school in the east end if it gets funded? Or, you know, the project at Glen Allen High School? Or the addition at Hunger Creek, which was spoken of? I mean, so it's so much on the table, you know? And so I think it's, that's a plethora of things. And so we've got to definitely look at doing that. Krista, I'll let you speak, and then Ms. Consella, then the superintendent wants to say some, okay, I'll go to you next, Ms. Atkins, then Ms. Superintendent. Ms. Consella?
I I just want to agree with my, with my colleagues. We are trying to minimize any more stress within our communities. We are looking at how we can be thoughtful, creative and proactive in resolving some of the overcrowding issues. I mean, it, for me specifically, I have quite a, I have some hotspots, so I just appreciate everybody's support. I would like to make a recommendation for board consideration as to a timeline. Perhaps hotspots fall 2021. And the second, perhaps, call it Phase Two, would be implemented fall 2022. And if I might, it also, fall 2022 is when the largest bubble of students who are currently in seventh to 10th grades is when they will be in ninth to 12th grades. And one of our biggest problems is at the secondary level. So I appreciate you mentioning the additional capacity and Ms. Ogborne and and the specialty centers and how we can evaluate the relevance of our programming as as well as the demand and the equity within it. There are so many different types of equity, as we've discussed, and access opportunity to programs. Will we increase seats in in these centers? We just have a lot to look at, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Atkins?
And so I'm delighted because I think we're well on our way in moving forward. And and that's the mission all across the board. So I wanted to say that because everyone is bringing, as we listen to each other, a way to move forward. And I think that's the key. It also gives hope for those who are watching and those that will view this later, that we're not kind of just spinning wheels. I do want to address the old Highland Springs building. This is a place where it's critically important to partner with our Board of Supervisors, and I want you guys to know that I partner with Reverend Nelson very, very closely. And so when we do meet for our joint meeting, I think it's important that everyone is aware that there are already ideas wrapped around that building. And so I would be remiss sitting here and not identifying and sharing that those conversations are happening. And we would need to have that joint meeting sooner rather than later. One of the biggest things that I am most passionate about is resources. And that old Highland Springs building could potentially be a great place for wraparound services and other things. So as we introduce ideas around specialty centers and reducing some of the capacity in other schools, I think we want to make sure we have enough time in that joint meeting to talk about that as well. And so Dr. Cashwell, this is your area of expertise around operations, and I'd be remiss in not saying that I'm sure that Dr. Cashwell has her own ideas about the old Highland Springs High School. And so before we get too far ahead of ourselves, I'll go back to what I said earlier. You can use the past to help you make decisions in the future, but you need the right set of information and the right people around the table to make sure that information is getting to everybody in order to make the wisest decision. And so that joint Board of Supervisors meeting, I'll reiterate, I would hope happened sooner rather than later. That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Dr. Cashwell?
Well, just to recap and make sure, from staff perspective, that Mr. Sorenson, staff and I understand the direction the board is giving us. It seems that certainly what I'm hearing consensus on from this board is the shared understanding that our community is in a unique and challenging time. And so proceeding with redistricting as it had been laid out with the maps the committee brought forth is not your intention at this time. And that instead, your intent is to look for a fall 21 implementation of some fixes that address three things that I heard, and if I've missed something, please let me know. Mrs. Consella specifically indicated the importance of addressing how we'll utilize the additional capacity that the new Holliday Elementary will bring as it's set to open in fall of 21. And she suggested we creatively look at how we might move pre-K students from within the Brooklyn District to achieve that. So Mr. Sorenson and staff and I can certainly work on bringing forth a solution for the board's consideration. I also heard a request that we look specifically, Mrs. Shea, in your district, at what you were calling an equity issue related to one of your middle schools. And so we can certainly work to understand what specifically those concerns are and bring forth at a future meeting some, a map option that may address that again, and looking to implement that also in fall of 21. I heard Mrs. Ogborne specifically talk about the capacity at Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge, and she made note of some pieces in in that map D4 that had actually addressed in her mind in a manner that meets the needs of her community, Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge. So we can certainly bring forth that piece of D4 that addresses both Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge overcrowding so that the board can take a look at what addressing those three things may do as we move forward as part of what I think you're hearing called Phase One, which would be implemented in fall of 21. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, does that cover those pieces as I understood them?
It seems that my peers are agreeing with your your recanting of that.
And so for the next piece, and and I'll want to continue, and perhaps the board has more discussion on this piece, it seems that there was a shared consensus around the idea of looking towards the future to make sure that we're utilizing capacity appropriately by looking at any number of things Mrs. Consella pointed out related to anything from setting budget priorities, capacity priorities, CIP, strategic planning. Of course, specialty centers and programming's come up from each and every board member. And you all also shared that having the right numbers will matter. And so in September, fall of 21, we'll know more about, we hope, what enrollment it will hopefully have stabilized, given current situation. And so it sounds like there's a a desire to use data from fall of 21 to make decisions moving forward. What I'm unclear on is any sort of shared timeline related to what that looks like or what that strategy would be.
Well, I know me personally, now I'll let my peers speak. I mean, I would, I mean, I would agree to the first phase as far as that, but I mean, to be definitive now for two years out, I at least want to see how that first one goes, and then we can talk about what the second one looks like or what anything looks like. That's just me personally. That, I mean, I do not want to speak definitively today for the next two years. I don't want to do that. I think if we have a consensus on this hotspot piece, then we can address that, and then we have to distill the rest of these things. And I'll, I'll start with you and go this way. I mean, you got a question?
For me to, for me to be in on a phased redistricting, it needs to be hotspots fall 2021 and other fall, and broader, fall 2022. If not, then we need to have map discussions and have all this data, have staff divert their time. And and we need to get on these budget, strategic plan, capital plan, conversations, relevance, demand, are we meeting it in our, in our specialty centers, especially at the secondary level? Glen Allen High School is 107% today. There was not a mass exodus. We lost, we're four, four students less today than projected at Glen Allen High School. I can't put it off past fall 2020, beyond fall 2022. Just.
I I have a suggestion for a process. What if we do our hotspot review and let's say, end of October, Mr. Sorenson brings us a suggestion or whatever timeline, that that part we can discuss. But what if we look at what would it look like to use the preschool program and do Holliday? What would it look like to have Colonial Trail and and Rivers Edge relief and any kind of equity adjustments at, for Queakuson? What if we looked at that in a couple of weeks, whenever the staff can get it ready? And we say that fall of 21, when we're implementing those changes, we also do a review at that time of where we are, what our numbers are, and set something then for implementation of fall of 22. And then we can figure out what our process is going to be. We'll look at, hopefully, all of the mask wearing, et cetera, will be behind us and we will know where we are and what our program needs could be. That gives the staff time to look at implementing changes, possibly with the specialty centers and programming, gives us a chance to put all that together. And then in the fall of 21, we start with a plan that will be implemented in fall of 22, like you're saying. But we set a time for when we're going to address this again, and what are we going to be talking about then? It gives us time to work on that. That's an idea.
All right, Ms. 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 Ogborne, thank you. Ms. Atkins, and then Ms. Shea, final thoughts before we talk about?
For me, what's interesting is I think there's a lot to digest at this moment. And I'm fine with your recommendation, Mickey. I personally would like to take more time before I come back and provide a recommendation because a lot of information has been shared at this moment. And while that may not be helpful to you, Dr. Cashwell, what I can commit to is in the next 24 hours, sharing with everyone my thoughts and ideas. I think it would be wise for me, I've been taking notes, to really go back and look at what everyone wants and how what one person wants would impact someone else. So for me to sit here and give a recommendation and assume that I understand what each of my colleagues want would be remiss. I actually want to take the time to take this back, and I can get back to you in 24 hours and share with you my thoughts.
Thanks, thank you. Ms. Shea, you want, you want to say something?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I I agree, I can get on board with Ms. Ogborne's proposal. Two thoughts. The first one, I would suggest not coming back with the maps on October 22nd, which would be late October. There's going to be some other things going on on October 22nd that are going to need our full attention. So I think we're either looking in two weeks or six weeks as our timeline. And so I would just personally, so that I can be responsive to my constituency on what will probably be two local issues, prefer not October 22nd. I also think that in the meantime, between now and fall 2021, when we may resume this discussion about, you know, the larger pieces, I think it's important that we continue working on the budgeting pieces and the development pieces and the specialty center pieces, and people understand that we're waiting for those enrollment numbers, September 30th, 2021, to really look at like true maps for, you know, the whole county. But the work on some of these creative solutions that Ms. Consella has put forth and other things we're looking at, that's going to be work that's going to be happening continuously until we get there so that when we do get to fall 2021, we know what our capacity are, we know what our programming is. We know what our programming is. And we can look at how those September 2021 numbers fuses in with that to be able to move the process along. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please restate what you stated, so it'll be clear.
Okay. What I was suggesting in the date of presenting to us, when I totally...
Can you interject what Ms. Shea said?
Sure. The 22nd maybe not a good day. But basically, we would ask the staff to look at the maps from the committee and fuse the changes that would take in the northwest part of the county that would affect the two schools in my district, address holiday and any equity issues that we can come up with to help with Queakusen. And that would be our hotspot addressing plan at this point. And I think we need, I think Mr. Sorenson had mentioned that we would need to come to a consensus on that plan in the January...
We need to give our families all the time we can give them. So yes, into January.
In the January timeframe, so families can get adjusted for the next fall. But basically, we'd meet right back here, a year from now, decide where are we, what's happened, and then start the process for the next phase to implement in fall of '22.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cancela.
That's what... If I may just ask one thing, you just prompted something that's very important, especially since we're talking about our specialty centers and the relevance and capacity. I would very much appreciate if there was a disclosure, maybe just, if we were very communicative with the fact that we are evaluating where our centers are, relevance, demand, such that when, I would not like, I believe that when families choose a specialty center, they look at where the center is as well as the program. So I would just like for us to be extremely communicative as students select centers. Or maybe, is it possible we could have the center analysis done prior to students selecting their centers?
Well, our aim is certainly to have some of that done and to the board this fall and through this school year. So I guess depending on when any timeline would be that you would be looking to make any changes, which it sounds like that'd be fall of '22. Is that what I heard the board saying?
It's a goal.
Yes, that analysis would be done in advance of the selection process, if that's what you're asking.
Correct, for this year. I mean, I know that we've been discussing it since this new board, at least I've had conversations regarding this since early February, end of January, early February, as to the relevance. And after the seminar we went, attended last year, July 2019 with the chamber, I just, I would, I do not want to see families go into selection again and then, and then find out, oh, they're moving the program.
That there's a potential their center could be moved. We'll look at the dates for the selection process, provide a draft of some language to the board that may indicate as anyone's selecting a center that there's the potential that the location could shift. And I'll also get back to you on a timeline of when we think we'd have those recommendations to you, so you can see if those two things align.
Thank you.
Well, one thing to note, I'll just add this, okay? When we did our specialty center 2020 revamping a few years ago, one of the things that we did is we looked, we did an overall analysis of all of the specialty centers. And we did a phased change. And so, for example, when the Math and Science Center at Godwin changed to the Medical Sciences, that happened over a several-year period, so that the students who applied for it knew exactly what they were applying for when they did. We even had some changes for those students who were currently in the program when it changed. And so I think our staff has real experience with these adjustments and phasing in and that kind of thing for changes. And, because it was changes, massive changes in curriculum. So I think our staff, we could depend on those who were back, who were there when we did that a few years ago for input on that adjustment.
Certainly want to just reiterate that, you know, we would be, we would want to be very communicative, which is I think Mrs. Cancela's point about the fact that if the board is considering shifting specialty center locations in response to capacity or any such issue that may arise, that students know that in advance of selecting the center. But just to reassure the public, I think none of the things we're doing to study our specialty centers would result in a student who's currently enrolled in a specialty center no longer having that program option. We were talking about locations, not that the program itself would, would not be something they could finish if they're already enrolled, to your point, which was similar to how that was handled in the past.
Okay, Ms. Shea?
So I absolutely agree with being communicative about the specialty center programs and any changes that might happen. I wanted to circle to timeline. I just looked up the other, the rest of the board meetings for this year, for 2020. So we have October 8th, October 22nd, which we're not going to do October 22nd, November 12th, and then one in December. And so are we thinking October 8th for Mr. Sorenson to come back? Or do we want to wait all the way till November 12? Obviously, in the way I phrase that, it was a little biased. I think that the 12th might not give us enough time for ample community feedback, especially, you know, with the, then with the holidays coming. But I'm eager to hear your thoughts. And also, Mr. Sorenson, if this is going to be too much of a lift to turn around in two weeks.
Well, let's let Dr. Cashwell speak first on that, what her thoughts are.
No, certainly, I agree that, given the request the board has to devise some maps that may address these specific issues, I think sooner is better. We're certainly prepared to put the work in to get those to you by the October 8th meeting, so that not only this board has time to take a look, but should you wish for the community to be able to weigh in, that would allow ample time to do so.
Yeah. So Mrs. Shea, kudos to you, because that was my comment. I think sometimes we are trying to move too fast without having everything we need to be successful. I think it's going to be important to get more information from Mr. Sorenson. And as well as, before we start setting dates and times to do certain things, again, let's make sure we have all the information that we need so that we can make proper decisions. I think, again, we're all in agreement about addressing some specific things. But I also just want to make a note that Band-Aids don't work either. And for me, I would like, that's why I'm going to say this one more time, before I agree to any dates, I would need 24 hours. I want to really sit back and think about what Mrs. Cancela said. I really want to sit back and think about Marcy. I'm pointing to you and saying, Marcy, Mrs. Ogborne. And I'm doing that because I feel her smile on my shoulder. And as well as Mrs. Shea, I just, I just want to caution us to give HCPS staff the time they need to get the information we're requesting. I agree sooner rather than later, but I would be remiss. And for those that are watching in my district, I know that if we give a date and for some reason, we get to that meeting and aren't really firm in what we're doing, I think that's wrong. I think we take the time to let Mr. Sorenson give his information. Let's give each other time to talk to one another, to really understand what each person wants. And so that's my feedback. I won't have any other comment, but that's just my guidance for our board to, we've heard what everyone wants. Let's really take some time to receive additional information and have follow-up questions around what everybody wants, so that when we do come back, we are ready to really move forward. This is more discovery, in my opinion.
Sure. So your comments as far as the specificity of like timeframes, how does, how does that square with what you propose? And I just want to make sure on the same page.
I think they're not mutually exclusive. I mean, I think one of the things that, our target is to let families know in the winter, because that's what I think, by early winter, that this is the way forward. So if we need to take our time, then I don't think that that affects it at all to be, because we're talking about small changes here and we're talking about such narrow, targeted work that, I mean, I'm amenable to whatever works, honestly.
So I think that that's what we're saying, Ms. Atkins, that for the interim, right, the first conversations would be the narrow work that she's referring to. But to your point, I think that specifically speaks to the more comprehensive nature of what we're talking about doing. I think we are in consensus that we need to, you know, do a deeper dive into all of the different parts that are moving and kind of come to consensus in regards to that. So I think that we're still saying the same thing.
Right, right. Say it different ways, but I think we're on the same thing.
I think we're there, yeah.
So we're still with her original statement, you know, we're just, the data that's going to be brought back, we're going to let the superintendent tell us what she feels comfortable with as far as giving the timeframe to the families and us the timeframe to look at it and make a decision. That's kind of where we are now, so.
And I totally agree with you. For us and for the families, this can't be rushed. And we need to do it right, because we don't want to have to do it again anytime soon. And then when we look at it, let's say we all agree, in a year from now, we're going to evaluate where we are and go forward. It gives everybody time to do their work. I mean, there's nothing that's more stressful or upsetting to a family than moving their school, you know, of attendance. And we don't want to take it lightly, but we know we have some work to do. And so I, you know, I think we're, I think we're there.
All right, Dr. Cashwell, can you close us out on this?
I am going to do my very best and hope that I understood correctly. And pardon me if I'm repeating some of what I said before, but I just want to make sure we have very clear direction. The board is not continuing the comprehensive redistricting process with the maps that had been previously produced by the committee. However, it is the wish of at least three individual board members that we take a look at what has been dubbed hotspots, I think was a term used, for three specific areas of need within your district. We will provide back to this board on the October 8th meeting, a look at some strategies to address those specific issues, so that the board may consider them and determine whether or not there's a need to get public input and go forward with putting those into place for the fall of '21. Does that sound correct? It also, I also understood from this board that there's some work to be done to determine timelines, but that there's agreement that in the fall of '21, we should take a look at enrollment numbers and any number of factors that will be proactive with between now and then in relation to planning and capacity, to determine whether any future process would be needed. So, Mr. Sorenson, I think we have our marching orders for October 8th, and we'll look forward to bringing that information back to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to step any longer? You better get down.
Well, I have one more item there, Reverend Cooper, so I'm just...
We need to bring in you a chair and just let you sit in. That's right. And Mr. Sorenson, set us up for the next item. So without further ado, I am seeking the board's approval on the amended secondary education fee schedule for 2020, 2021. And as you know, Mr. Sorenson stands ready to answer any questions you may have, but again, seeking her approval on these amendments.
Well, members, are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay, we're going to start Ms. Ogborne and Ms. Cancela.
I just have a comment. Are we reminding parents of the ACA and our dual enrollment courses of that $50 fee?
Correct. So the...
This has a long history, as you and I both know.
Correct. So the class of 2023 will be the first class to pay the $50 both years. Yes, we are, we are straight on that.
Okay, we're setting that up.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Is that it? Is it? Ms. Cancela?
Yes. Okay. The class dues, this fee is not new, correct?
Correct. It is not due, no ma'am. It is not new, no ma'am.
Okay. And then where are we? I mean, you brought up a good point as to how are we communicating our dual enrollment fees? Where are we in grandfathering the dual enrollment fee issue? We had a few, I guess the board had a few years ago, as to communication? Where are we? It costs quite a bit of money, I believe.
Correct. I believe it, I believe it's $50 a credit or course. And...
Take credit.
Yes, it's, the fee is $50 per course. And while it was implemented several years previously, we had delayed the ACA because of the, until we knew they were informed before they actually entered and selected the ACA as their option. And Mr. Batton worked with the center directors to make sure parents, you know, were aware of that. They, you know, signed a paper indicating that they were aware of it and what the total costs were for each one of the two programs.
Okay. Thank you for clarification on that.
You're welcome.
And then, one more thing. I see the PSAT fee, PSAT fee is eliminated for freshmen. Could you please just explain to those who are watching or who may watch why this is such a positive fee adjustment for us by removing it?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. So we think that freshmen taking the PSAT is very important. Taking this test as a freshman allows them to get into practice of taking the test in the future. But also, we use that data to help guide students through their high school career. So we think it's pretty critical that freshmen take that course. So because we believe that you all had the foresight to include that money in the budget to pay it for freshmen only, to eliminate that financial burden for them. And when we brought the fees to you in May, we simply left that on the list by accident. So it's incorrect.
Thank you so much.
Ladies to my left, Ms. Shea or Ms. Atkins, do you have any comments, questions? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you all for your comments. Well, that being said, thank you, Ms. Sorenson, for that presentation. Let me move to getting a motion to receive his proposed changes to the fees. Is there motion to approve the amended 2020, 2021 fee schedule for secondary and career and technical education students?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Ms. Cancela, is there a second?
It is a second, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the amended secondary education fee schedule has been approved.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson, for both items for which you were present. Next, I am seeking the board's, oh, these are consent items and can be taken in a block. I am seeking your acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending August 31, 2020, acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services operation for the month ending August 31, 2020, and approval of personnel items.
Is there motion to approve the following consent items? Acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending August 31, 2020?
So moved.
All together, let me finish.
Oh, sorry.
I'll let you do it, though. I'll let you do it, though. Thank you, Ms. Shea. So fast, my gun. Acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services operation for the month ending August 31, 2020, and approval of personnel items. Ms. Shea?
Still moved.
Thank you so much, madam. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the consent items have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the minutes from August 13, 2020 work session and August 27, 2020 work sessions be approved. Can I please entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, is there any unfinished business? All right, we'll start Ms. Shea.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I wanted to take an opportunity to update the board and our community on the Freeman mascot process. So just as a reminder to our community, this was a school-based process led by Principal Marshall and his administration team. The process began on June 11th with some media output and some social media that we were going to accept comment about the Freeman mascot. So following that, there was a survey, a committee that formed, and a community forum about it. The survey, we received over 2,000 communications about the Freeman mascot name, including 1,500 formal survey responses. The committee was formed of 14 members, including current students, staff, alumni, and alumni spanning many decades, as well as a community forum. To give you an idea of some of the responses, of the formal responses, 34% advocated for keeping the Rebels mascot name, while 60% wrote to urge us to adopt a new school mascot. while 60% wrote to urge us to adopt a new school mascot. A majority of alumni who responded supported changing the mascot, as did an overwhelming majority of both the faculty and the mascot committee. On August 6th, Mr. Marshall announced the decision of the Freeman administration that the mascot will change. Right now, we are in the process, or they are in the process of working with the VCU Brand Center. And the main question they are trying to answer is, what does Freeman stand for and how can it best be representative? It's an exciting time for the Freeman community. They are working with one of the industry leaders in sports branding by using the VCU Brand Center. That was a partnership that was able to be brought together by alumni of Freeman who were also alumni of the Brand Center, which is fantastic. And they're utilizing students to help process data and look at marketing strategies, so some life-ready applications. It's also a new chapter in the Freeman community legacy. When I spoke to the Brand Center, they did an interview with me last week to get my thoughts on what it means to be part of the Freeman community. I, I spoke about how Freeman is like, has a lot of layers of tradition. You know, and with each principal and, you know, with each decade, there's another layer of tradition that's added to the Freeman legacy. And this spans over the last almost seven, seven decades. And this is a new layer. And so I am excited to see what the Brand Center proposes to the administration and what the administration chooses. Again, the board is not picking the new mascot. That is being completed at the school level. Additionally, I wanted to share that each of our five board members individually participated in a comprehensive review and discussion of the history of Douglas Freeman the man with administration, as well as talked through community and committee feedback collected during the mascot process that pertains to the school name.
Thank you, Ms. Shea, and Mrs. Ogborne.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you. I, I cannot begin to overemphasize the importance of your leadership in this and the, the just amazing job that you have done, Ms. Shea, for the frequent contact with your constituents, the alumni, anyone who has emailed you, called you. It's just countless amount of communication going on about the mascot issue, which, as you said, board members do not vote on this. We do not select. But you still have been willing to help facilitate the discussion, which I think is so awesome. And, and to Mr. Marshall, too, his leadership has been amazing. Getting, because this could have been a very divisive issue. And what he's done instead is been able to pull the community together, to come together, to come to a consensus, as you said, to let us know that they are going to change the mascot. But to also, he did an amazing job doing the research on the name of the school. And because there is discussion, should the name of Freeman be changed? And, you know, I, I just think both of you have gone above and beyond the call of duty to, to get to the point where you are. But just a little bit of, of history, Reverend Cooper and I both were on the board when we faced a very similar question, and that was to rename a school. And the school formerly known as Byrd, now known as Quiacus. And, and changing the name of a school is something we do and is something that comes to our board. And it is the most, it is a very important in this conversation to have, but it's not an easy or uncomplicated process. And there are many issues on either side. But after meeting with Mr. Marshall, one of the things he did, I, I don't know how, whether we did it individually or what, but I know I, I talked to him for over an hour about the history of the school, the history of how Freeman fits in that community and the contribution of Douglas Freeman. And I read a lot of emails, things that were sent to Ms. Shea. But what I would like, I can firmly say that I would absolutely not be in favor of considering changing the name of Freeman at this time. Goes back to what we talked about earlier. Our community is going through a lot right now. And, and I think adding that discussion right now would be inappropriate. But I also think from, Mr. Marshall has let us know that it's not the right discussion. It's not, in my opinion, a thing that I would be able to entertain. I mean, when we, when we changed the name of Byrd, I knew it was the right thing to do. There was a compelling, a movement to do that. But schools across the nation face this question every day. And I don't think in this case it's warranted. So I would ask that we would come to a consensus. And if we can do that today, that would be awesome. Because I think the Freeman community needs to move on. They need to be able to pick their mascot and continue to be together and not be divided on it. So I would hope that we could come to a consensus. I'd be interested to see what the rest of you have to say. But personally, I would not want to enter that process at this time and I would not be in favor of changing the name of Freeman. So I'll leave it right there.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Ogborne, I concur. And I also want to personally thank you, Mrs. Shea, for, for all the time and efforts that, that you spent. And also direct throw out some, some thanks to Mr. Marshall because he did spend a great amount of time with, with the community, with the mascot effort. And then when he went over talking about the man behind the name of the school, he did a very thorough and objective presentation and entertained questions, I believe, for possibly over an hour. And I'm just appreciative of that. I believe right now, our community does not need a conversation such as this that perhaps will bring about more division. And at this time, based on what Mr. Marshall shared with me, I do not believe a, a name change of the school is warranted. Thank you, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Cancelo. You want to say anything, Mrs. Atkins?
Yeah, I do. I appreciate your hard work. I have a school that, that also is in the midst of a mascot change. And I'll provide that update momentarily because I want to focus on this particular topic. I, I think that, you know, during this time, again, the focus has to be on our children. And when we change a mascot of a school, if we change the name of a school, it deserves the utmost respect. And it should be done in a way when someone is not stressed. It should be done in a way that doesn't distract our students and hurt our families at the same time. And so I, I won't say that it doesn't warrant a name change. What I will say is that it deserves more exploration. And I will say that it deserves to, the process itself needs to make sure that everyone is heard, from the alumni to the senior, to the junior, to the sophomore, to the freshman. And right now, even asking the question, I'm not convinced that anyone can provide a response based on their social, emotional well-being. So if the question is, do I, I want a name change? I won't answer that. Do I think this is the time for the conversation of a name change? No, I think this is a time for a conversation around exploration and to take our time in that exploration to ensure that everyone at your school feels like they've been heard. I hope that gives you guidance and feedback.
Well, I think, thank you, Ms., Ms., Ms. Atkins and everyone else. I think to Ms., Ms. Ogborne's point, she basically stated that this time, that's not an item that we need to consider. And I think the consensus amongst the board is that, that's not something that's going to be considered right now. So hopefully, that will give the community the, the kind of understanding that they need. That's not on the table, I think, in that you asked. So I think we're in agreement with what you proposed. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ogborne, thank you all for your comments. Again, I, I concur. Thank you for, you know, taking the lead. It's definitely something I know that you're very passionate about. We've talked, you and I. And as a division, you know, it's important that we all stand with each other as we go through these kind of exploratory conversations as we are concerned about our districts. But most importantly, we're concerned about our county and our residents and our students, and so I appreciate that. We're still on old business. Anyone else have anything else for old business? Ms., Ms., Mrs., Mrs. Atkins? Yes, ma'am, I got you. I got you. Yep.
It's interesting, and we're, we're definitely moving longer. So I also want to provide an update around JRM's John Rolfe Middle School and to the school communities as well regarding the mascot, just so that you know where we are and where we're headed. So a survey was disseminated a month or so ago to receive feedback. Those results are being assessed and discussed. A meeting is also scheduled for next week, I believe, the 29th. I am going to be a part of that meeting and it'll have other stakeholders as well as the native families of the Samaritan Baptist Church, again, to discuss next steps. I need you to know that, just as I said, in the similar situation that Marcia Shea has just discussed and this entire board just discussed, it is utmost important that we take our time in the process and making sure that we understand the process and the roles and the responsibilities and the principal and his school that he runs and that the impact of changing a mascot and name to the staff, to the alumni. And what's most important to me is to the children. And so this meeting set up for the 29th, we're going to discuss these next steps. We're going to take our time with these next steps. And so whether you receive an update in the next week or an update in the next month is dependent upon that conversation. And so I just wanted to give you, one, where we are, just a real general timeline. And just remind the communities, there are a lot of R, you know, R is the word or alphabet that's being used for a lot of where we're headed in the Rolfe School community. So resilience, and I'm going to look to make sure I get it right, resilience, respect, and reimagining. And then there's two more words beginning with the letter R. And it's so appropriate for the theme of the school year. And it's Rolfe Rising. And that is the priority. The priority is for our students rising beyond their circumstances and moving forward academically, socially, and emotionally. And while the mascot is a discussion and we're going to continue to explore that, the number one priority is what I just mentioned. And if anyone has any additional questions or comments, you're welcome to contact the principal because it is that principal's school and it is that staff that helped operate it. And as well, you can contact me.
Chairman Cooper, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Okay, all right, thank you all for that unfinished business. Any new business by the board? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Atkins.
And so, to kind of understand the dichotomy between high expectation and limited resources and what our health and PE teachers and their support staff have done in the Verona District is astounding. And so I have been sharing that with several partners. And one of those partners is PTO Today. And through PTO Today, I was selected based off of what I shared and the wonderful work that's been done by our health and PE teachers with some appreciation tokens for our health and PE teachers. And I wanted to share some of the things that I said for those that are watching, if you're a health and PE teacher or a support. And if you're not, share what I'm about to say with them. Some of that is, great people do little things with excellence. And so it's not about how much you have. Sometimes it's just using that little bit that you have and doing it in an excellent way. And I am so grateful that our health and PE teachers are so creative and so innovative to keep our kids active in a time where they could really just be sitting still. And so with that, all health and PE teachers will be receiving appreciation tokens from PTO Today and myself. You should be receiving those probably in the next week or so, maybe the first week of October. And so just know that if someone comes to you and asks you, you know, how does your school board rep feel about your work as a health and PE teacher and doing it virtually? You make sure you confidently say to them, job well done. Because I've had an opportunity not to only watch my children in health and PE, but I went through different neighborhoods of people that I knew and specifically asked when their health and PE time was, just so that I can watch. And it was a time that I saw children smile doing jumping jacks, putting their laptops on the floor so they could do their sit-ups. And it's wonderful, and I'm proud of you. So again, every health and PE teacher in the Verona District School will be receiving these appreciation tokens, so thank you.
Awesome. Well, congratulations to your teachers for receiving those. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all so, so much. That being said, the next item on agenda is the announcement of our meeting date. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, October 8, 2020, at 1:00 p.m. in the New Bridge Learning Center Auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.